Like to call this meeting order, Benzy County Board of Commissioners. Today is April 11th, 2023. We're in the Frank Wadler House Boardroom. Roll call please.
Cunningham?
Here.
You're not?
Here.
Markey?
Present.
Nye?
Here.
Roloff?
Here.
Sauer?
Here.
Orseki?
Here.
I'll present.
Thank you. Please stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Lord, thank you for the opportunity to serve the citizens of Benzy County. Ask for your guidance with the decisions we'll make today. Please keep all of our public safety personnel safe and free from harm. In the name of your son. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. If you've had an opportunity to look through the packet and proof the agenda.
I move to accept the agenda as presented.
We all second.
And Markey.
I'll support.
Minutes from March 23rd. Pardon me. I'm sorry. All those favors say aye.
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 Pose. Don't move.
Yes.
Your Honor moves to approve minutes March 28th.
The ones that you gave us.
No, Rhonda had a change.
I offered one other change. It was under the Dan Engler comment about the daycare. It said they wanted to expand it up to 11 people or up to 11 children. And I think that was misleading. I think they wanted to expand it from the amount of children. They had 11 more children. So Tammy was going to make a correction to reflect that.
Perfect correction.
Nine seconds.
A motion of support. Is there further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Don't move. Brings us to our first public input. Is there anybody like to share on your public input? Sir, please come to the podium and state your name, please.
My name is James Patack. I live on Adams Road. I have three questions. Who's in charge of the fiber optic project? Is Adams Road on the agenda or not? We have limited 911 service on Dependable. And who is funding the private road next to the boat launch on Frankfort Highway?
So normally, sir, under public input, the board does not respond. So what I can do is direct you to the county administrator's office, and they can probably answer some of those questions directly for you.
Where, Ken?
My office.
Okay. Thank you.
Q.05. My staff is in the audience now, but they'll be back in the office in about 10, 15 minutes if you want to go down there.
Doesn't work very well.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else like to share in public input? All righty, we'll close public input and move on to finance. I'm looking for a motion to approve $291,028.96.
I'll make that motion to pay them down on bills.
Thank you. There's motion and support. Is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Give me a second.
Anybody else? Roll call, please.
You're not?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Nye?
Yes.
Roloff?
Yes.
Sauer?
Yes.
Orseki?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. We'll move on to elected officials and department heads, and I would like to invite Sheriff Rosa, Cory Ellis, Sergeant Mark Katz, and Mrs. Katz, if you wouldn't mind joining your husband.
And Rexel. Don't forget Rexel.
Don't forget the pub.
I will defer. Actually, I will say something real quick. Obviously, we're here today. We've got several things going on. We're, we are celebrating 911 Emergency Dispatch Week. So that's part of why we're here. And I'd just like to say that as a sheriff, we know how important it is that that lifeline, when you call, you get someone and you are able to talk to them and they help you. They help the citizens as well as the officers. So it's huge. And in my 34 years up there at the sheriff's office, the one job I always said I could never do was dispatch. And it holds true today. They're special people, okay? And not everybody can multitask and do what they have to do. So my hats off Krista and Cory and his whole staff for that. As well as Sergeant Katz, who's about to retire. He's got a few days left. We have events coming up where we're going to officially recognize him. But I lured him down here to, to watch Krista be recognized, his wife, and to allow the commissioners to talk to him as well. And he's brought his canine Rexel, who's going to be retiring with him at the end of this week. So we appreciate all that he's done over the 25-plus years. And we're going to miss him, both of them. They're a team. And they do a lot for our office and for our community. So thank you very much.
Morning, everyone.
Dispatch Director Cory Ellis.
Cory Ellis from Benzy 911 here. Just going to read a little bit here today. Krista's going to find out really quickly that she's here under false pretenses, so. Just a little bit about us. You know, Benzy County Central Dispatch, we're 24/7/365. We have a dedicated staff. They're always there. 911 phone rings, someone's answering it. That's a human. That's us. Krista's one of those people. They provide the integral link between the community and all the public safety agencies, police, fire, EMS. They answer those phone calls. Despite all the challenges, changes, and obstacles that has been faced over the past year and several years for Krista specifically, there's been one individual who stood out, willing to help, willing to support the mission of the organization. This employee has also been an integral part of the future of 911. She's been a part of our training program consistently, optimistically, and compassionately. She's helped shape the future of 911 professionals here in Benzy County and helped ensure the organization is set up for success for many years to come. Additionally, she has multiple commendations and recognitions, recognition. Additionally, she has multiple commendations and recognitions, recognitions over the several years that she has worked here. It is with great pleasure for me to present our inaugural dispatcher of the year award to an employee who has not only achieved everything I've already mentioned, but she also just reached her monumental milestone, twenty-four years of service this weekend. So please join me in acknowledging, congratulating, and honoring Emergency Communication Specialist Krista Katz as the two thousand and twenty-three dispatcher of the year.
On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, it's my privilege to represent the Board of Commissioners. Today, we're here to acknowledge the commitment of Sergeant Marquette's for his dedication and loyalty to the citizens of Benzy County. We wish you and your family a great retirement and life after Benzy County Sheriff. Hey Krista, thanks about your commitment to Benzy County and nine-one-one. I can't tell you how much you guys, your office, means to us. I'm one of those people that calls nine-one-one and they'll be excellent. So I know how important it is to these people and what they do. So thank you for your commitment to us.
I would like to hear it from Bert Gale. Bert is our Building Department Manager.
Good morning.
Morning, sir.
Morning.
I trust you got my report?
Yes, sir.
I have been alerted that there may be some errors in the report, so I'm gonna be working on that. But I do wanna talk about the numbers that I at least have. So two thousand twenty-three, we're tracking for that first quarter, right about on track. Last year, for the same time period, we had sixty permits, and this time period in two thousand twenty-three, we have fifty-six. So I'm not gonna say that we're not, we're not ahead, we're not behind. I think we're right about where we belong as far as the number of permits coming in. So I, I don't feel like we're slowing down as even though I've heard some contractors say that they're slowing down. I haven't seen it yet. So that's really, other than what I have given you, that's sort of my quarterly report. I think, I think we're kind of moving forward in normal fashion and I, I'm not seeing any, any slowdown at all. Questions for Bert?
Just one. I'm only doing it because I've been carried into it. Can you enlighten us anymore on Sunkist? I know I talked to this gentleman here and everything was okay, and how it's been going, I just didn't know if there's been any further action. And they're more worried about the runoff and everything, and they're still getting pictures every time it rains, so just thought I'd ask.
Yep, so one of the temporary control measures, the salt fence, did fail. We notified the soil erosion people that pulled the permit. They had five days to deal with that. We took pictures this morning. They did deal with it. And so everything seems to be in order. All the permits that were required for that project have been obtained and are obtained properly. So it's, it I, I too have had some complaints. As so has Jim. But the system is working. The soil erosion fence did fail. We did get right ahold of them, created a violation letter, got it out. They, they did correct the problem within the timeframe that was expected of them, which is five days. So everything is, is in order, although I will tell you that there's, there's still more work to be done there. They, they did a great job. But there was a lot of salt that went over top of that fence, a lot. And so they did clear out the majority of it. There's still a few, a little bit left right there that we're gonna be talking with them about. But it doesn't rise to the level of issuing citations, anything like that. They were very reactive to getting it cleaned up.
Appreciate that. I appreciate Jim talking to me, and anytime I have a question, you guys seem very open. Thank you.
Well, if you ever find that that's not true, call me directly, please.
No, I just wanna thank you guys for doing it.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Bert, I know I ask the same questions every time you step up there, but first, how many people are you staffed with now downstairs?
Two office staff and one building plumbing, mechanical, electrical. Well, mechanical and plumbing are done by the same guy.
And when you have a builder or contractor call in and they need an inspection, how long is it taking you to get there?
They get ahold of us by three-thirty in the afternoon. They're put on the next available day schedule. Typically, it's the next day, sometimes it's the day after.
And you've not, and by the way, I'm not leading you anywhere. You've not had any pushback from contractors recently that have said that you're slowing up their jobs because we're not getting out there?
Not that I'm aware of. No.
Great. Nor have I. And I appreciate that attention, as, as we know, you know, time is money for them, so.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thanks, Bert.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you being here.
Enjoy the day.
Yep, thanks, Jim. Any other elected officials, department heads? Kyle?
Good morning, Kyle, with Animal Control. Not much of an update, but we're starting to pick back up a little bit, so that's nice. Not so much sitting around. So got a little bit of yard work to do once our giant mound of snow up there, you know, melts down. Hopefully, the next week or so, we got that to finish up. This last rainstorm that we had destroyed our kennel yard, so got a lot of troubling to do there. And then also the last storm kind of destroyed the trail that Boaster meets up to the Betsy Valley Trail. So I've got my work cut out for me there. I'll get to that hopefully some point this week. Go through there and clean up all the trees and all the debris that made its way down through there. Vehicle's been working out great. No issues with it. Today, we're supposed to be getting, getting fitted for a divider, which is in our K-9 transport in the backseat. We're getting a divider fit in there today. Kyle Harris welding is supposed to be fabbing up something for us. Since that divider didn't come with any type of, like manufactured divider, we got ahold of him to make something up for us. So that vehicle should hopefully by May timeframe be fully equipped with all the storage and stuff, storage equipment and other kennel for the rear of that vehicle should be in by then, hopefully. And then we are having to purchase a new mobile radio for that vehicle. I wasn't aware that we were gonna have to do this purchase. Cory has done some work up to his office in regards to the emergency switches that he's trying to implement into the radios. I was aware that my old radio was pretty old. It was kind of a hand-me-down from a hand-me-down, so. But he came up there and did some work. He can probably give you more information. But long story short, basically states that the state of Michigan can't provide updates to that radio and won't provide updates, and we won't be able to put any type of emergency buttons on there. So kind of a safety thing, I would say. So we did put in a call to Grand Travers Mobile to get that process started, which is about a four-to-five month process, so we won't get that for quite some time. But as of right now, the radio works, just won't be able to do any type of updates in the future. That's bad news there, so that's all I got.
Questions for Kyle? Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just wanna say first off, thank you, seeing on the action items for the agenda, the approval for next year's capital projects for the Maples. Please note that we truly appreciate any and all resources and support that the county commissioners are able to provide. It makes huge difference to the operation that we conduct every day for our residents and for our families and staff. As I mentioned in a previous meeting, it is my hope, my request to ask the county commissioners to please consider making available the maximum amount of funds for capital investments for both this year and for next year. The crux of the issues that we're facing with capital investments, it's twofold. We are seeing a significant increase in the quotes and also the additional costs as we collect bids and see projects done. We are also running into issues with the scope of the work. As we are encountering these capital investment projects, oftentimes the initial quotes do not truly, not truly encapsulate all of the needs once the project is underway and we're getting going. A perfect example would be our rear parking lot, our employee parking lot last year, that we intended to pave just half of it. The other half was already paved. Well, when Kirby, the vendor, was on-site to complete that work, they also helped us identify that we had sinkholes in our existing parking lot, which was caused by a collapse of a underground drainage. And that occurred because several years ago, there was an addition to the old portion of the building. Well, when that addition was completed, there were, there was no consideration for the additional water runoff from that extra square footage of roof. And so what was initially going to be just paving a portion of a parking lot ended up being replacing the existing parking lot as well, so that the repairs to that drainage could be completed. We also then had to put in a retention pond to handle that additional water runoff. And of course, there's, there's always some comical nature to it. When they started removing the existing blacktop, we've learned that over years past, rather than removing existing asphalt, layers on top of layers had accumulated, and so the removal of the existing parking lot needed to be completed. That in total ended up being about sixty-five thousand additional dollars that was not anticipated. When looking at the heating and cooling project, and I, please know that I don't like talking about this heating and cooling project any more than you all probably like hearing about it. But in review of past quotes and past invoices, what was originally intended to be approximately a two-hundred thousand dollar project in two thousand twenty has ultimately come out to close to six hundred thousand dollars when we consider all of the work that ultimately needed to be addressed with the existing heating and cooling system. We recognize that these unforeseen costs needed to be addressed, and so you needed to. I anticipate that as we continue, we may see that the previously amounted budgeted, the previously budgeted amounts may not fulfill the financial needs of quotes that we should anticipate to receive in the future. And so with that, please, and thank you, and if there's any questions that I might be able to answer, I'd be happy.
Questions? You already look like you're hesitant.
Oh, me? I gotta wait till we discuss it.
Okay. Anybody else? Roughly, can you give me some idea of how much money the taxpayers pay annually?
For the millage to the Maples? Truthfully, I, I try not to be too, I don't want to ever be too dependent on the millage dollars that we receive.
That's now it asked. I know I pay, and so does everybody else here, pay every year our taxes, millage money that goes to the Maples. I'm asking how much that generates?
I don't know the answer to that question.
I have nothing else.
Shelley can answer that. Just the operating millage, that's what I thought. Be close.
And I know that some of that money does go to the bond or the
No, no, no. So that millage is the operating that she talked about, and then there's a separate bond millage as well.
Anybody else? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Any other department heads? Cory?
Cory Ellis, Benzy nine-one-one director. I'll keep mine short and sweet. I gave you guys a quarterly report to kind of look through. And that'll kind of be how I go forward, obviously still being here, any questions about that. But what's not included in that is what happened last week. I won't really go into a whole lot of detail. I think Katie has a much better update on that. But I think our summary from my department's perspective is it was a really long week last week. Fortunately, I have some amazing staff that stepped in and stepped up and really limited the effects of what happened when we were able to maintain operations. So I kind of wanna give kudos publicly to my staff for stepping in, especially my deputy director, who's in the back there, Mike Woodrigger. I got a phone call at three-thirty in the morning. He got a phone call at four AM, and we had a vendor on-site at four-thirty along with both of us, so it was a long week, but.
There's one more department head there as well?
Yeah, the sheriff's here and
Emergency manager?
Yeah, yep.
Thank you. So she may be part of that.
Yep, yeah, she also got the four AM phone call when she was here quickly as well. But any questions?
And this was brought up to me. Do we have any type of surge protectors on this stuff? And it still didn't work?
For, I can only answer for my department, and that's yes.
It didn't.
Did not. It went
Thank you.
It went all the way through that for some of our equipment.
Damn.
Total cost to repair?
We don't know yet.
I wish I had a better answer. We, to work, our vendors are not done assessing all of our damage, so.
Is there any damage that could still be undetected or?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thanks. Anybody else? Thanks, Cory.
Thank you.
Other department heads? The moment we've all been waiting for, action items. Surplus property.
The first item in your agenda is to declare the service weapon of Sergeant Katz's surplus and authorize it sale as he is retiring. This is pretty customary for law enforcement. When they retire, their service weapon is gifted to them. In Benzy County, it's historical practice. The union actually purchases the service weapon for the retiring deputy. So this is an official action to declare it surplus so that we can sell that service weapon and give it to Mr. Katz.
I'm a little confused. I'll make the motion if you want. No, that haven't do it.
So I'd like to make the motion that the Board of Commissioners declares a Sig Sauer forty caliber service weapon surplus and authorizes it sale and disposable disposal, with the sale proceeds to be utilized for replacement service weapons.
My question is, I thought they buy us a new one. Which makes this excess. So we're not really selling it, are we? I'm a little confused on the wording.
So it is Benzie County's property, and because it has value over the threshold in our policy, this board has to declare that weapon surplus, no matter how it's disposed.
You are correct in that the funds received from that go to the purchase of a new replacement. You are correct.
How it's written is so you sail it, and then the sale proceeds are utilized to buy a replacement service weapon. Yep. Because it's Benzie County property, you have to declare it surplus in order to dispose of it.
The other discussion? Roll call, please.
Marky?
Yes.
Nine?
Yes.
Roloff's?
Yes.
Sower?
Yes.
Or Seki?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Do not?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thanks, Sheriff.
Item B, adapt amendments to the directory of charges.
So some time ago, the board adopted a directory of charges, and the purpose of that directory of charges was to create a more streamlined, consistent approach to the various fees that are charged by the Benzie County offices. It was identified in the treasurer's office that a couple of the fees needed to be adjusted, and so that's what you're seeing in the packet in front of you. So far, the feedback we, we've received on this directory of charges has been positive. The community likes that there's one central location to identify fees. So the, the document has given positive feedback, but this is simply to update the treasurer's fees. And if you have detailed questions, she is in the audience to answer those questions.
Anybody else got any questions?
Comfortable with it. Nine moves that the board of commissioners adopts the amended directory of charges for Benzie County, updating the fee structure related to the county treasurer's office.
Marky will support. His motion and support. Is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Dai?
Yes.
Roloff's?
Yes.
Sower?
Yes.
Or Seki?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Do not?
Yes.
Marky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Right, item C. It's a multi-factor authent-
Multi-factor authentication upgrade.
That's the one.
So we're constantly trying to improve security, email security, network security for Benzie County. And so this upgrade is another step towards heightening our security. Multi-factor authentication, essentially what that is, and I'm sure most of you have dealt with it. When you log into your email, you have to put in a code. We are ordering little tokens for all the staff that will give a code, kind of like what banks do for businesses. However, staff's going to be given the option to utilize a free app on their phone if they don't want to keep track of a token. The state of Michigan already requires this for a lot of their state systems, like the QBF, the Qualified Voter File. So this is one more step to strengthen our security. It's also a requirement for central dispatch. They have to move towards having that multi-factor for some of the systems that they're utilizing. So we feel that it's best to do it for everyone, the entire Benzie County campus. So that's what this is for. We did originally budget for this about half of what it came in at, but that was our prior account manager. Things have changed with our IT services. And so the cost is coming in at just over forty-five thousand dollars to do this. Like I said, we had budgeted half. However, we do have funds in the CARES grant fund that were realized as general fund dollars. And so the remainder of that would come from that fund. And at the end of the day, that would have been an allowable expenditure of that grant because this promotes security for working from home as well as just network security in general for those who access our network.
Is there any kind of service that we can secure multiple bids on?
So a lot of the cost is actually Microsoft. The majority of the cost is Microsoft. So you're no on that piece. The tokens that are being provided are actually some of the cheapest tokens out there. And everyone who has a county phone, I'm requiring to use the free app, so I don't have to buy a token for them. But it's, these are actually quite cheap tokens. We could have doubled and tripled the cost of the tokens. And so this is a pass through from our IT vendor who does do the bidding process for the services and equipment that they use. And so this is part of our IT contract for them to provide these things. And like I said, most of this is a pass through costs, not, they're not upcharging it. They're upcharging the installation and the programming, but the tokens and Microsoft and those things are pass through costs.
Hey, and I have one question, Sheriff.
Sure.
Um, does this affect our WebEx phone calls and everything that come through?
Um, so no, WebEx, that's, that's through Telnet. So that's a completely, that's completely separate. This is going to be for like your email, that sort of thing. And so all of you will end up having a token to log into your emails as well.
Was, was my understanding that our phone calls came through the email system?
No. So you have a setting that you can pass the voicemails to be translated or the audio file into your email, but it's just basically that's an email being sent to your phone or to your email. The phones are Telnet nets, completely separate.
Okay, thank you.
Is this a one-time fee or is this going to be an annual?
So it's going to be annual, but not to the tune of forty-five thousand. Microsoft, as lovely as they are, have moved towards a monthly fee platform. And so whereas before the county would purchase the Microsoft license and we were good, now with Microsoft, you actually have to pay monthly. And so we will be seeing increased costs for software and technology. And there's not a lot we can do about that. You know, there is G suite, the Gmail suite, however, it has its deficiencies and they still charge a fee, just like Microsoft. So we're kind of trapped in that sense for that annual fee because I don't know who else we'd go with. There's not really anyone else available to that. I hate it, and I've expressed my displeasure. But Microsoft, quite frankly, doesn't care what I have to say as an individual because it's Microsoft. So, yes, it's, but we, when we were going through it and auditing the Microsoft licenses, just to make sure that we have a consistent license approach, we did take into account the, what, who's using what in those Microsoft accounts? And so if we were able to downgrade the Microsoft account, we did, and then that saved us money as well. Yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have one more question. Is there a security cyber difference? Security between the two G and Microsoft?
It's, you know, from what I'm being told is that Microsoft is much more secure and has better abilities for managing an enterprise. Google does a good job, but there are limitations in Google that Microsoft has addressed.
Okay.
Cause I asked about Google. We used Google downtown years ago, and I really enjoyed it. But IT right has indicated to me that Microsoft is much more secure and has better abilities.
For future, thank you.
All righty. Somebody like to make that motion?
It's a long one.
Nine moves that the board of commissioners accepts quote number VC three Q two six one two zero received from IT right to implement multi-factor authentication for Benzie County staff in the not to exceed amount of forty-five thousand, two hundred eighty-five dollars and twenty-five cents and authorizes funding from the capital fund and the CARES Act fund, and further that it authorizes a necessary budget amendment to move funding from the CARES Act fund to the capital fund.
I'm coming in sports.
Motion and support, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Roloff's?
Yes.
Sower?
Yes.
Or Seki?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Do not?
Yes.
Marky?
Yes.
Dai?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Move to item D, consider opting, adapting a per diem policy.
In your packet, we noted a per diem policy. However, on your desk, there was an updated copy passed out. It was noted to our office that we overlooked ad hoc committees in the policy, and that was not our intention. Because those are subcommittees and you should be paid for them. So we, we took out that section specifically, you'll notice. But this policy just sets the tone. It creates a consistent practice for per diems paid to the board of commissioners as well as the other volunteers that serve on the various boards and committees for Benzie County. We have sent this policy out to all of you for your feedback as well as the staff, the elected officials and department heads to get their feedback. It's also been reviewed by Matt Northyard at Cole Stoker and Toski. So this policy has kind of touched everybody. You'll notice that this policy does have an attachment to it, appendix C. Rather than listing out various things to really lengthen the policy, we did the attachment style because that appendix C is re-adopted each year with the budget when you guys adopt the budget. So that way it keeps this policy more current versus having to every year re-adopt the policy because something may have changed within its body specifically related to committees and boards. It also includes your board rules as an attachment. It's not attached to the stapled copy, but that's also noted as one of the attachments. Cause again, you adopt the board rules every single year. So that helps us not have to re-adopt this policy in addition to your board rules every single year. You'll notice in appendix C, there's various boards where per diems are not allowed, and in many instances, that's because statute doesn't allow it. So one specifically is economic development and brownfield. Technically statute doesn't allow for a per diem of that. And so we will not be paying that per diem going forward because statute does not allow it for those representing that board. And then we'll, we'll be taking a closer look at all of them just to make sure we're doing what we should be doing going forward, not saying that there's been misuse and mispayment. But we're going to be taking a closer look. It's a, it's one of the things that's on our forefront right now is to take a closer look at the various policies and what they do, and rather than just keeping with what we've always been doing.
There was one other change made from the, and that was we had decided as a board to allow
Yes.
Commission, we had eliminated alternates and decided that if a commissioner needed another commissioner to serve in their place, we added that to the policy that that's also a paid
Yep.
Change. Sorry, I forgot that. So in the instance, you're not able to attend one of your designated committees. You can call another board member to attend as your alternate, and that alternate person would be paid that per diem in the place of you because you're not able to attend. So we added a statement about that in there as well.
Katie, you and I had a conversation about this on the phone.
Yep.
And we talked about ad hoc and subcommittee meetings.
Yeah.
And I see that you did remove that in part of it. If you turn to page three of the handout and you look at number four, that part didn't get strict.
Is it the intent of the board to pay the subcommittees? So the smaller committees also subcommittees a per diem? I know.
What's the difference between ad hoc and sub?
Well, okay, I shouldn't say subcommittee. So the smaller committees that you appoint to does, is it the board's intention to pay them a per diem for their subcommittees? Or just your sub?
You give an example.
So so for instance, if, let's see here. So for instance, if Parks and Recreation Commission, we pay them a per diem, if they create a subcommittee to focus on a smaller issue to bring back to the full Parks and Recreation Commission, those subcommittee members, are we two paying a per diem to in addition to their normal Parks and Recreation per diem? Currently, we are not. So that's why it was left in there because currently we are not for smaller board subcommittees, but we are for your ad hoc, ad hocs, I should say.
So if we're assigned to an ad hoc committee from the chair of the board, that's allowable expense.
We've been paying you. Yep.
But if I sit down, let me just use a community action agency, and I'm on, I get appointed like to their executive committee or to a HR committee, we won't pay those.
Well, that's what I, that's what I'm wondering. Yeah.
That's the intention of leaving this in here
Right.
to address appointments other than what the chair is appointed.
Right. Because if we do allow that, we could get into some muddy waters where we're paying out a lot of money. Because we have no control over those subcommittees. And that could, that could put us in a bind depending on how many subcommittees are created by those smaller boards.
I agree. I think it should stand.
I don't charge for now, so I don't care. I just, I, I wanted to make sure that clarification though, I'm going to repeat myself, is for assignments that we have that are, for anything that's not assigned by chair, probably is the best way to identify it.
Right.
Chair doesn't say, I'd like you to volunteer to sit on that committee.
Right.
Great.
Yeah, it's for those, those really smaller ancillary ad hocs. We, we don't really have a control over those, and so it could blow up.
So I get it.
Got a couple.
Sure.
The list that you have, that is per diem on some committees.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Anything assigned to a commission?
Statute does not allow economic development corporation members to be paid a per diem. Michigan statute doesn't allow that.
Or brown.
Or brownfield. And then the other ones, if you'll notice on here that says which statutes allow what things, the ones that are blank. We have to look at those.
You're assigning a commissioner to sit on these. Right?
Well, these are the committees that are established as part of the board that not only many of you folks sit on, but they're also volunteers that are appointed to. So these are those various committees that have community members appointed to as well. So when you adopt the budget, you adopt this, which is the various committees. And then in here, it indicates per diem or mileage and who authorizes it.
Just, just to say it a little differently, if outside members of the committee that have been appointed, if they're not eligible for per diem, the commissioner shouldn't be eligible either.
That's, that's my opinion because you're now serving as a voting member of that board, and so that would make you a member of that board. And if statute doesn't allow members of that board to be paid per diem, unless you're a liaison. If you're not a voting member, you're attending on behalf. But if you're being appointed as a member of that board, statute says members of that board cannot be paid a per diem.
I just wanted to make sure the liaison gets paid.
Right, that so. Yeah, if you're a liaison, that's different than being an actual member. And so this is just another one of those things that as we've, as we're getting into the policy and rewriting this policy, we're learning a little more. You know, per se. So you guys have adopted this appendix C every year with the budget for I don't know how many years. But now that we're actually looking at member versus liaison, now we're having conversation about what those roles mean.
And Katie, if you look at the assignments that happened in the organizational meeting, there's a lot more organizations than what you have here in this appendix. Was that to say then that if it's not on this list, it's no longer eligible?
No. So this list is going to be updated with the budget this year. This is the standing list as it is now. So that's another thing is you guys have so many lists of what is committees. And so part of looking into this is we're cleaning a lot of that up.
So if someone is, is appointed and attending like the Chamber of Commerce meeting, even though it's not on this list, it's still a knowledgeable expense.
Because it's part of your board rules, and this incorporates your board rules as committees eligible for expense.
And also on this list that you have in front of us, you and I talked about this the other day, zoning board of appeals. I'm not sure we even have a zoning board of appeals at the county level, do we?
No. So this, this list will look a lot different as we approach the twenty-three, twenty-four budgeting and adopting the budget. Because we've identified that this list is, needs work.
There are two zoning board of appeals that they're served through the Natural Rivers Act and the Health Department zoning board of appeals where commissioners sit on that. Commissioner Roloff and I serve on that. So, but those are the only two that I'm aware of, and those aren't county established.
Yeah. And this is zoning board of appeals, which would have been in line with a planning commission. And it's still on your appendix C, which is part of your budget.
There's a health department. That's not really a zoning board of, probably.
This board of appeals.
It is for environmental, for environmental, yeah.
Yeah. You can appeal a decision by the health department.
It's a zoning issue, not a health department.
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
Okay, here's the other one I have an issue with, H two C. I happen to have two community uh townships that meet on the same night. And one of them switched their time to six o'clock. Um, well, days are done in a half hour. Do I make attempt to go to both? In the past, I've called and said um, I can be at your meeting, but I'd be an hour or so late. And there's something going on, they asked me to go. And I will charge you for both of them. Just questioning this because it says if you don't sit for the four and a half, five hours, you don't get paid.
Um, yeah, this is the same topic, topic that's being discussed by other counties because of the abuse.
Yeah, I attended a school board meeting last night that went on about two hours and forty-five minutes. I left. It was not completed, but the idea that I can't put a per diem in for that is
It just seems really questionable to me. I mean, if you have.
Yeah.
Townships that you regularly go to.
Mm-hmm.
And I always think a commissioner needs to be there.
Sure.
At all possible.
So maybe this is tweaked to be um reworded that says, you know, the majority of the meeting or something like that because the, the why it's in there and the issue is that it's not saying that any of you are abusing it and that you're going to abuse it. But other county commissioners and other counties are abusing it. They're going, giving the report, walking out, going to another, giving a report and walking out. And that is not being a good steward of the taxpayer dollars.
Best practice in a lot of townships.
And that's just, that's so I'm fine with tweaking that statement because yes, if you're there for three hours and you have to get to another meeting, but they're not quite done yet, you've still given three hours of your life to them. Um, so if we want to tweak that statement to somehow uh say, you know, you're staying um your majority of the meeting or something on those lines. What I want to stay away from is that somebody says you're only going for five minutes to give your report and you're leaving.
Because I think there's a responsibility, not just to give your report, but to glean what's going on.
Correct.
Part of the community to share with the full board so we have a broader.
Yeah.
A broader knowledge of what's going on in the community as a whole.
Yeah. So um, we will tweak that statement so that it's clear that you don't have to go to the entire meeting because if you're in an instance like you where you have to get to the next meeting, so you stay for as much as you can. I think that I'm comfortable with that. Um.
There's one township immediately has me give the report first thing.
Mm-hmm.
I always say if you got enough, got something going, go ahead and leave.
Mm-hmm.
I'm going to make the attempt. I just want to make it clear.
Okay, we will tweak that statement.
Well, just to counterpoint on it though, and I'm not really here to try to win hearts and minds on this, but you go to one meeting and you're there for twenty minutes, you legitimately have to go to another meeting and you're there for an hour and a half. You know, you've got less than two hours invested. In my opinion, and I don't know how you document that, but okay, that's really the equivalent of one meeting, but I do want to reverse for my mileage. So uh, I don't know how you um document the amount of time you spend at a meeting.
Yeah.
So I agree, can't be for the full meeting, I, meeting last night that I was, I was done by ten to nine, but um, on the other hand, yeah, if you're only there for a couple of minutes, you should get paid for time.
Yes.
You know, I mean, you got to accumulate the tw- two hours in deal, get paid one time.
So would you like it to be tweaked that it's two hours because your, your normal per diem is four hours? That forty dollars is for a four hour meeting. And then it's eighty dollars for the, the longer meeting. And so do you want to keep it strictly on the timeframe versus the number? So if you go to two meetings in two hours, that's one forty dollar per diem. Because the, the way it's written is up to a four hour meeting is forty dollars.
I struggle with um saying that you need to be there for at least two hours to get the, because if you're there for four hours, that's ten dollars an hour. What's minimum wage? Uh, just.
Well, I mean, it's not meant to be minimum wage, it's meant to be a stipend.
I know.
Um. And this is a county issue. It really is counties. Cities and others don't pay their board members to go to a lot of these subcommittee meetings. It's part of your annual stipend. So thi- this is a, these are county issues and I know county commissioners and administrators struggle across the board about this whole per diem thing because it's just so different than other forms of government.
But your timing is right to bring it to us, there's no question.
Mm-hmm.
No matter how much we're trying to show good practices, we don't want to be in the paper like.
No.
Well, we could do like Muskegon does, pay the commissioners eighteen thousand a year.
They also have offices and they're in the building and. Yeah, probably do. I know their administrator makes over two hundred, just saying.
Yeah, I just don't want to carry this too far.
I don't either. I just wanna, I want a consistent practice. I want it memorialized in a document.
I mean.
Yeah.
I, I think the verbiage of majority of the meeting.
Best effort to attend the majority of the meeting.
Meeting, uh, because I'm in the same position as Commissioner Sauer. I have a back to back.
Mm-hmm.
And they're only two hours apart.
Yeah.
And what they adjourn, the first one you typically will adjourn in hour and a half to two hours.
Yeah.
It's over and then I go to my next meeting, you know? So as long as, and I think the responsibility is like um Commissioner and I said, you are taking all the information and sharing it with the rest of the board. So we have a big picture, but majority, I think, would answer the question to that. And we're responsible with sharing that pertinent information. So we have the, the whole, you know, I guess, salt, we have the whole picture.
Mm-hmm. So are we comfortable with tweaking that statement to be um something on the lines of a commissioner will um make the best effort to attend the majority of the meeting or something like that? Am I seeing, I saw half the heads none. Yes, yes, yes.
So while we have this tweet before.
So we can bring it back in May if you want to see that statement. Okay.
I think the other topic we need to touch on.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Um, is we've made a, a really diligent effort to get members on the MAC boards. Um, and those MAC meetings are in Lansing. Um, if we all start attending those meetings, we have another budget buster situation if mileage is paid for. So um, are we all comfortable with how that's addressed in the per diem that everybody make their best effort to attend by Zoom unless directed by, I think it's worded as the chair. If there is a, a important topic that we feel the county needs to be represented in person. I just want to make sure we have clarity moving forward.
I think that was the original intent of even being on these boards.
And we're also talking about that heavily this afternoon as well. Um, because I think that was part of the issue in the past of why you didn't have representation on all those various high level boards is because of the issue of mileage and per diems. Whereas we now live in such a digital world, we had that Zoom option, but we just threw you all in and didn't really talk about it. And so we're going to talk about that this afternoon about um, when we find it's appropriate to tend digitally versus in person. Because there's a lot to be said about being in person at some of those meetings, but there's also a lot to be said about attending digitally on the other half of the meetings. And so um, we just need to come up with a consistent practice on that as well. Otherwise, the county can't financially withstand everybody being involved in all of those high level boards.
And I'm going to reserve comments because it's going to be on this afternoon. Uh, by the way, for what it's worth, um, community action agency pays my mileage. This county doesn't pay my mileage. We negotiated that with them five or six years ago.
And the same thing with the Health Department, they pay our mileage and per diem. And there's other ones, I think, Central Wellness does and that kind of stuff. So I mean, maybe we need to really look at some of those things.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, some of these committees that are supposed to be for free, a lot of work. Sure that volunteer part of this might.
Yeah.
The, the bigger concern in all of this is that we've got some bad players, you know, in different communities and they're doing nothing but trying to crank up the bill.
Yeah.
And uh, so now we're forced to review our own policies because in my seven years here, I've never seen anybody abuse anything.
I'm not aware of any abuse, honestly, and we've been trying to take a very close look at all this, all these things. Um, but I want to at least set the consistent standard, so we're not on the front page.
You have to defend something you're able to.
Correct. So we'll bring this back on May ninth um with the tweaked statement and we'll um look for approval on that day.
I just said one, one thing. I know we talked about that number four, the no per diem compensation for ad hoc and subcommittee meetings. I think if we're asking people to do the work of the county at these meetings and they have the extra subcommittee meetings and they're not abusing it, I, I think we should pay people for, for doing the work for the county. Um, and I would think that if people are abusing it, it would become pretty apparent quickly when we're writing out the, the payments for these that it would be, it was being abused. So I, I think we should pay people if they're doing the work.
Let's just offer a different point of view. Um, so I get assigned community action agency and I get paid to go to that meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And as part of my involvement with the organization, I've chosen to be on your ticket and your housing committee. But that was never directed from a chair. That was a decision I made because I thought I could either bring value or take value from it. So I have no expectations of the county paying for me to participate because I made that decision. But you can look at it both ways. Nobody says you've got to serve in that ad act. And if you make the decision to do it, you should consider that you're doing it for personal reasons also.
The other thing too is from what I understand of a lot of those committees is they're much less formal than most. And so we'd have to really encourage the formality to be put in place because I know a lot of them have a lot of unofficial subcommittees. And it'll, it'll get out of hand. And so there needs to be some more formal in place with those smaller boards because you can't just have all these unofficial subcommittees raise your hand to meet at the coffee shop to talk about this. You need to actually set ad hocs and set meetings, post them for the public and those sorts of things. Because if it is a subcommittee of an official board, you're affecting policy, which requires it to be OMA. And so there would be a, there'd be a large educational piece of all of our smaller boards that needs to be put in place. Because they need to be formal if we're paying for them. Because at that point, they're public meetings. Okay, we'll bring this back on May ninth.
Very good. Item E, adapt a secondary employment policy.
So this is another policy. Um, this policy in a condensed version is already in the current personnel manual. It's also talked about in some of our union agreements about secondary employment. Further, it's a policy that's recommended by your insurance carrier um for risk reasons and those sorts of things. And so what we've did is we've taken the um very high level short section of the personnel manual and we've expanded upon it into a full policy. Um, we have taken out elected official off of the policy because there was concern of, well, why should I have to ask to have a second job? Um, this is not saying people can't necessarily have a second job. However, the union contract of central dispatch says no second job. Um, this isn't saying someone can't have a second job, but it's a matter of informing administration and informing the county of those second jobs. So there's no ambiguity, there's no question, there's no, you know, if we're going out to bid for a contractor for the lower level of the sheriff's office and one of our staff works for that contractor, that could be an issue, a conflict. Um, that's what this policy does. It's a, it's a cover our liability. It's to cover our risk. And so that's what that policy is. It's not saying that we're going to say you can't have a second job, but we gotta, we gotta be informed about it.
But what it's also saying is that we're your primary.
We're your primary.
And you know, if you, if there's a conflict in scheduling, we've got to be, we've got to be the priority.
Correct.
I struggle with this policy. Um, I don't like the verbiage where uh, one of our employees has to ask permission for what they need to do outside of their employment here.
Mm-hmm.
I don't have any issue with the requirement saying that anything that you do outside of your employment here, you can't, you're an at-will employee if you're not in a union. And so you shouldn't be using the county facilities for something outside your job. I understand all those rules and I appreciate those. Um, what I do have issue with is saying that, um, well, it's twofold. Asking an employee to ask permission for what they do outside of employment. And I also think there's ambiguity in what employment is. A lot of people have different income streams. If I'm selling Mary Kay or if I'm, you know, um, I have an Airbnb. If I have, if I, so I have to ask the county for permission to conduct myself in this way outside of my work hours. I'm not comfortable with that. So I don't know what would have to happen for me to vote yes and be in alignment with this policy, but I know as it sits right now, I struggle.
So that section about asking permission is a copy and paste of your policy that's been in place for years. Um, that's in there. Permission does seem very motherly. Um, I do understand that.
Oh, right.
Um, if the board would be more comfortable of, you know, making aware and the county reserves the right to say no kind of thing. Um.
I've also seen that abused. I mean, I, I, I've heard of instances where folks wanted to wait at local, you know, restaurants and establishments and, and, and.
It's an issue, I know. So like I said, it is a copy and paste of your current policy. If you want to change it, I'm fine with that, but this policy is important to have in place because at the end of the day, we need to protect Bensie County government and Bensie County. And so I know permission seems very motherly, very subordinate. Um, but it's not uncommon by any means.
And just to be thorough in this conversation, this was talked about prior to our whole upheaval and administration. We had started an HR committee, uh, prior commissioners Taylor, Taylor and um Farrell, yeah, Farrell served on that committee and this policy gave us pause.
Sure.
And it, and it inspired a lot of conversation and then, and then everything changed.
Yeah.
And so we walked away from that conversation. So it had started.
Please come to the podium, Shelley.
On the county treasurer list serve, there's often conversation about incompatible offices where we have a lot of part-time clerk, treasurer, commissioner trustee kind of things. And there's statutes that govern incompatible offices. So it's also up to our offices to make sure that we are not staffing incompatible offices.
Correct.
You cannot be a township treasurer and work in my office if you do certain things. My office isn't large enough for you not to do those certain things. So as a county treasurer, I can't allow you to be a township clerk or treasurer ever. You, you can't work in my office if you want to be a township treasurer. You can be a clerk. But there are rules about that too. Certain things can't happen in my office because you're the clerk.
Hmm.
You know, so it's, it's not really a- about getting permission. It's making sure
We're protecting.
That we know where you are, so we are not bidding out a job or that you're not in an elected position that you shouldn't actually be in
Mm-hmm.
to, to work here. So it's just trying to clear those things up so that we don't get ourselves caught in, in an awkward position. It's not really about permission. It's just about you know, hey, I'm seeking a job at X company. I just want you to know I'm going to work Saturdays and Tuesday nights. Is that going to be a problem for you? And as long as they're here Monday through Friday, eight to five for me, I'm good with that, except when you're trying to be the township treasurer.
Yeah.
You cannot be.
I appreciate that, but the verbiage as it stands is the word permission and it indicates that that, that permission can be denied and.
Central Dispatch's union agreement says the same thing and Corey can deny it.
That is a union agreement. They can, they can approve or I mean, we are at-will employees for people who aren't in the union and, you know, we have no yeah, I hate to make it too simplistic, but somebody been. yeah, I hate to make it too simplistic, but somebody binge watches Netflix all night long and comes in and doesn't do their job well. Well, then there should be judged on the merit of how they conduct themselves at their job. It's not about an employment. It's broader.
And we have other policies in place that would address work performance, job performance, tardiness, those sorts of things. And so if somebody has an outside job, that's cool. But if that outside job is now causing tardiness, poor performance, missing a lot of days, well, now that falls under another policy of discipline.
I, I appreciate, I mean, I appreciate the input. I know it's how it reads as it stands. I just, um, I struggle with supporting it.
But I think that Shelley's comments probably couldn't be a better testimony um, to support something like this. But in order to reach common ground, because I understand what you're saying, permission sounds very real. Is if we could use that language.
Authorization. Or simply permission. I mean, it's.
Authorization.
Or notification with the right of employer to deny or, but I hear what you're saying. It sounds very unfriendly from an employee's standpoint.
Right. I'm, I'm happy to, happy to tweak it. At the end of the day though, we really need to know if people have outside employment because it protects Benzie County.
For the very reasons Shelley cited.
Exactly.
Okay.
So if I don't.
To a lesser degree, do you want to be aware of all income streams? Or do you want to be aware of when people are actually punching in or punching out? I mean, to what, what do you define employment as?
That's up to you, I guess. I mean, it could be income streams. It could be ten ninety-nine W two employment. Um.
As I said, for it's problematic for me in a two.
Right. Yeah. Cause yeah, if you have an Airbnb or you have, you know, if you're a social media curator and you're making videos all the time, you know, it could, it causes issue. It does.
The best way to define it is if somebody else controls your schedule, then you're employed. If I own a group of lakefront cottages, you know, I'm not employed. It's an investment.
You are if your staff calls in and you have a changeover and you have to go clean them.
But I'm the employer. I'm not the employee. So I do.
But you are the fallback if you're employees.
Well.
I, I.
So in a, in any case, I think a de- definition to consider is if I have no control over my scheduling of my second employer.
Actually, Art, there's a little bit probably more into that because if your income stream conflicts with the business of the county or could be a, a contractor to the county or have influence over a contractor to the county, then there could be a problem there.
Mm hmm.
So just that definition, I, I think would, so it's, it can be hard to define exactly what we're talking about employment. Right?
So you disagree that if someone else sets my schedule, that isn't a good definition of.
Correct. Because if your your income stream has influence over some type of business of the county could be participating in, that could then be probably what this policy is trying to cover.
Do we even have a conflict of interest policy or something that these employees sign?
Um, we're working on all those things. There is. It is addressed very high level in the personnel policy as it stands.
I mean, that's really what you're looking for.
Yeah. I mean, this.
Does it interfere with my job?
Right. So this says employment with Benzie County is considered primary. Any other work or services performed shall be considered secondary. So it's work or services. All employees desiring to participate in outside or supplemental employment must obtain permission.
But the question I also have is do we have any part-time employees?
Yeah, we at various times throughout the year have part-time employees.
And would this apply to them too?
No. I mean, they sign on to the policies. It would, but it wouldn't.
We need to probably define that though.
Yeah.
I mean, we have, it's not as if we don't have some history of this. We had an employee here that uh was employed by somebody else also in the community. And there was times that they left their job. Quite frankly, I thought before they should. Because when I would try to reach them, no, they had to be, I'm not going to say where, but at three thirty.
Yeah.
So it's not as if we have been down this road. That was a direct conflict that their immediate supervisor allowed to happen.
Mm hmm.
I think we need, need a policy. I just think it needs to be. I know.
Could we have instead of permission that uh whoever the person is of authority that makes the decision, if they're in charge of their department, whichever department it is, and they see a conflict that that's what our policy says, that it relies on the per, the not permission, but whoever has authority, if there is someone over that person, we pay them to make those decisions and know that information. So could we say something like that?
Like, there's some muddiness to that though, because elected officials are different than department heads who are appointed by the board that report to me. So there, you, you know, so it's treated a little differently.
Okay, I can s- I can see that. But what I was thinking is if people have another job, so whoever that person is of authority, does that make sense?
You're saying the outside employment's boss?
Would, yes.
Well, this is saying Benzie County is primary.
Mm hmm.
Why should I rely on your other employer's boss to tell me what to do for your primary job?
As in other.
Can I make a suggestion? I, I think we know in general where we want to head with this. I'd encourage us to let staff take a look at it and um, I think you understand where we want to go, right? To some degree.
I mean, the, the policy is fine, except the word permission is what I'm gathering. And I can change that word.
It sounds like if we pull permission out, it, it changes some other interpretations too. So if we say makes aware, somewhere you got to have in there that you still have the ability to say.
Reserve the right to say it's a conflict. Yeah. Shelley.
The issue with elected officials allowing or disallowing that?
Right. The elected official doesn't have to, does not have to um implement this policy and follow this policy. Because that's happened many times over the years where an elected official decides to hold up the policy for one employee, but not the next.
I think, I think that is incorrect. I think, I think I don't get to choose willy nilly which times I use it and don't. I either have to sign on to your policy or I have to sign off to your policy. It's not a, I'll use it this week, but not next month kind of thing.
It has happened.
But it shouldn't. There, there should be an either or. I've elected to sign on to county policies because I don't want to create my own.
Mm hmm.
And I don't want to be governed by none. And so those are my options. And I, as an elected official, I get to choose them. But what I think we should have in this policy is because elected officials have that additional autonomy, if I authorize someone to have, and, and I think that's the term you're using, authorize, not permission, but if I authorize a second job for one of my employees or myself, I need to alert administration. I don't need to get permission from administration. I just need to alert them. Because I can say my employee can work a second job, but now she's going out for a bid and doesn't know that my employee works for that contractor because I didn't tell anybody.
Mm hmm.
So there's got to be, as an elected official, I can make that decision, but I need to provide that decision to administration.
No, I think, I think we need to give our employees a little more credit than that. I mean, this all to me goes to the area of autonomy and overreach. I think we can set our rules. I, I really appreciate the rules in here about what you can do while you're at work. Regardless, you can't use this space for things outside of your employment here. You can't use the computers to work on other things other than your job. But I think our control ends where we're telling employees what they can do here. Where it gets muddy for me is when we're telling employees that they have to inform us of what they're doing outside of their employment hours. I don't feel like, I feel like it's an overreach. My opinion, that's going to be my vote. Um, everybody else is entitled. If, if you feel strongly that this serves the county, I just lean more towards um the autonomy of the employee, that this, this idea that I need to inform my employer what my income streams are and what I'm doing with my time after I leave work because it might interfere with some rules at work. I mean, I,
at the end of the day, we have to protect the interests of Benzie County. So if I don't know what you're doing outside of Benzie County and you're doing something that's off color or illegal and I don't know about it, that's a problem.
Somebody tells you that they're going to do something off color illegal. They're not going to tell you anyway. I, it just is.
But by having the rule. If you're a security guard at the pot shop up the road, I'd like to know.
Why?
Why? I mean, these are the things we need to know because then if a deputy rolls up on scene and they don't know that that person that now there looks like, oh my gosh, there's a county employee who is, you know, breaking in. They don't know. We need to know these things. We need to know where people are employed. So in situations that could cause bad light on the Benzie County, we knew about it and we're prepared for it.
I don't think this policy addresses income streams. It's, it's about employment. It's about conflict of interest with county business.
And maybe that's where you go with theirs. You just say, um, they can't accept outside employment that's in conflict with responsibilities here. And it puts more of the onus on them. The disadvantage is Shelley's.
We're going to stumble on that because they didn't think it was a problem.
Yeah.
Now we're going to stumble on it. It's going to be an issue unless the county is, is aware of that and understands that relationship.
Or, or could say.
It's not really about permission. It's, it.
And we can take out the permissions.
Notify your employer to make sure you're avoiding a conflict of interest. That's what I'm saying. If you take this away and.
Tweak it.
Yeah, I think you've come up with the right language, but trying to build it here doesn't work.
What I'm hearing you say is you want to set this on the sidelines until the May meeting.
That'd be my recommendation.
Done. Item F, consider authorizing phase two of the lower level expansion project.
So some time ago, the Board of Commissioners um approved an agreement with environment architects to begin working on the lower level of the sheriff's office. This has been chatted about for years by Benzie County about expanding um central dispatch. We are calling it expansion into the lower level because it's so much more than central dispatch. Um, there's emergency management space down there, training space. Um, a break room that would be available to all county employees, a gym that would be available to all county employees. So it's not really a central dispatch expansion. It's really the lower level expansion because it's serving all county employees. So when the Board of Commissioners approved that agreement, they approved phase one, but not yet of phase two. We have went through phase one. Um, I did include a bird's eye view site plan of the lower level in the packet. We're now to a point where we need to move on with phase two, which is um going out to bid, awarding bids, those sorts of things to move on with the project. Right now, the very conservative estimate of the um construction project is one point six million. Uh, you'll know a couple of months ago, I indicated that we were looking at the range of one point two to one point six. So our still very conservative estimate is one point six million to complete the project down there. We're hoping it comes in much lower, but we just won't know until we actually go out to bid for that project. And so what's in front of you today is a approved um phase two, which is an additional one hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. And that would um allow environment architects to really carry out the rest of the services that they would provide. Going out to bid, we'd award a bid, um, management of the project and those sorts of things. I would invite that when we get to the point of reviewing bids and making a recommendation of this board for a bid, I would invite um a commissioner or two to sit down with the staff as we go through those bids for the project. I don't think we're going to get a ton um because of the world we live in, um, but I'm pretty confident. And so it's Ray from Environment Architect that will get two to three at least uh that will bid on this project into the lower level.
But Katie, this cost represents, continues to represent the soft cost of the project. Um, we, we've not really identified where the funds are coming from to the build out. There any risk? Well, there is some amount of risk that we'll spend this additional money, but not be able to move this forward because we don't have a funding source.
Um, we do have funding sources. Um, so between what the fund balances that have been being saved up in for central dispatch, um, they have a huge excess fund balance in relation to their total budget. Um, we also have a fund balance that's much higher than our policy indicates that we will have. Um, Shelley and I have briefly talked about um DTRF funding and ways to utilize that funding as well. Um, we, we have marijuana funding that has not been committed yet. Uh, we have the LAT CF if we able, or if we're able to obtain the grants for the body scanner. We have that funding for the next two years. It's also available. Um, we, we do have the funding streams available to take care of this project at the one point six. However, we're very, very hopeful it comes down. You know, closer to the one point two, three, four.
I just want to make sure we're not spending money that we can never recover because the project doesn't get finished. But what I heard you just say is that it could come from multiple sources.
Correct.
But we've already identified the fact that we can fund this project.
Yes. And so you, you do notice the map in the packet. Um, it's color coded so that you can see the various areas of the lower level. When you're looking at the dispatch area, you'll notice it's quite large with multiple desks. That's because we're thinking about the future. We're thinking about the future of Benzie County and as we grow and have to expand our departments, this space will serve central dispatch into the future. Um, same with the, the training space. We don't, we're very limited on our training spaces here on the campus. And so um, nine times out of 10, when we're doing trainings for central dispatch, for the sheriff's office and other, we're having to go other places. This would give us the opportunity to have those trainings in-house and also host trainings, which then would lower some of Benzie County's costs for trainings as well. So this does um help in a lot of different facets.
And remind me, the space they're occupying now, what's going to happen with that space?
I think that's still kind of to be determined as far as what exactly is going to be in that small room. Um, I believe probably storage for the most part. I'm not sure what else though.
A closet.
A closet. Might be a closet.
And we're still committed to making sure we provide adequate space for probation or break.
Actually, that is in your capital budget for this year and I have some plans from Sean downstairs. But him and I have been ships passing in the night and we haven't actually sat down and talked about when we're going to start working on that as well. But you guys did budget for that this year in the capital plan to expand his space.
Item F, yes.
Board of Commissioners sign an addendum. The consultant agreement with environment architects and amount of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand for the lower level expansion project phase two, which such agreement subject to approval as to its substance by the county administrator and is formed by legal counsel, funds available from the capital project funds of central dispatch.
Archie will support. Motion support. Present discussion.
And can you just clarify for me what I just read about the substance, approval as to its substance?
So basically what's in the agreement is matching what's in the proposal.
Okay. Good. Tim, you still good? Jim, are you with me?
Uh, yes. You didn't hear my head.
I could see it, but I couldn't hear anything in there. Roll call, please.
Bauer?
Yes.
Or Suckey? Cunningham?
Yes.
Jana?
Yes.
Marky?
Yes.
Kai?
Yes.
Roloff?
Yes.
Ocean Carey.
Item G. Prove a change in Commissioner to Northern Michigan Association of Counties. Um, I'm going to take responsibility for this. It was a mistake on my part and I apologize to Commissioner Jana. Um, so right now, Commissioner Cunningham is sitting on that. And we would like to change that back to Commissioner Jana. And I'll make that motion.
I'm going to second that motion and just offer a little bit more that I want to apologize to Commissioner Jana as well. Uh, he made it very clear out of the seven committees that he served on, there were three um that he wanted to remain on. Out of the seven committees that he served on, there were three, um, that he wanted to remain on. And we overlooked that at a meeting. It was an attachment on an email. Um, there was no, uh, waffling on his part. It was an oversight on our part.
So I apologize for any inconvenience either of you.
And I just want to make a comment that I think the consistency is a very good move, especially with that committee.
Good. Thank you, Karen. So if there's no other discussion, let's do a roll call vote.
Orseki?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Do not?
Yes.
Markey?
Yes.
Nye?
Yes.
Roloff?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you all. Item H, to approve payment of 225,000 to the Maples for the capital projects.
In your packet, I have provided the document of understanding that's been signed between the county and the, um, Maples Board as well as its applicable attachment, as well as, um, invoices from the Maples that Karen sent over. So as part of the document of understanding, there was a table included that talked about um, budget maximum and approved reimbursement. And as you recall, a couple of years ago, when this document of understanding when was put in place, it was the intent of the board to assist the Maples to become self-sufficient. Um, as far as taking over their capital expenditures. And so that's why that table was put the way it was is to encourage that self-sufficiency without the additional bond dollars coming towards them. So you will see a budget max of 300,000 and an approved reimbursement of 225. That's in line with the document of understanding. You did hear from Director, um, Loop this morning that they are requesting the budget maximum of 300,000 versus the 225,000. Um, for various reasons. And if you have additional questions, I'll let him get up and speak about that. Um, so what's in front of you today is whether or not you're going to stick with the document of understanding of the approved reimbursement, or if you're going to allow the additional $75,000 to be sent to the Maples for those improvements.
And just for clarification, I heard Nate say that that I was asking for this year, but also next year too.
Yep. And so you would need to tweak one of the motions if you wanted to approve it for next year as well. The budget maximum for both fiscal years?
I agree. That was the original intent. To make them self-sufficient and to work on their, their end of it. Money was to go for the old building. Very reluctant because this was a redoing the bonds. Main intent of that was to save the taxpayers some money. If we keep doing this, there won't be anything to save. Bless the Maples. They do a great job and this has nothing to do with what's going on. It's just one of those things I would prefer. My standpoint, that we adhere to the original agreement.
Hey, if you wouldn't mind, would you approach podium? Are we employing any contract nursing at this point?
We are, yes.
And do you, what's, uh, what, what would be the normal capacity? Um, for an RN compared to how many were, how many contractors we're employing?
Uh, so, mm, rather than answering directly with RNs, could I maybe talk about the nursing department as a whole?
You may.
Okay. Um, we actively have 17 contract staff. Um, a couple of those are going to be, uh, are going to be exhausting at the end of the month. We have a couple of new hires that are already in the wings, waiting to come into our next orientation. Um, on average, our nursing staff is going to be approximately 70% of our total staff. Um, when we think about a fully staffed, all departments, that's going to be approximately, so fully staffed building would be around 110 to 115 individuals. Um, so we'd be looking for, you know, a fully staffed department of between 70 and 80 individuals.
What's the cost difference from a employee of the Maples compared to a contractor?
Uh, it's, it's far too much. Um, truthfully, we don't want to rely on contract staffing. On average, a contract CNA may cost anywhere between 50 and $60 an hour. A contract nurse would cost anywhere up to 80 or even $90 an hour. Um, one thing that we are actively doing is conducting yet another wage survey for the area. Um, looking at Traverse City, Fantasy Counties, because we know that we're going to have to do more work in way of wages to continue to attract future candidate. Um, we conducted a wage survey last year with wage increases. In the middle of the year, we've recently ratified another union contract for more waging. And we're still having difficulty to recruit and retain. Um, and you know, I, I want to be completely transparent with you. The, the need of depending on contract staff right now is affecting our, our emergency surplus and our day's cash on hand. We want to get the contract staff out as soon as possible. And so it's my hope that within, uh, before the end of May, we have, uh, so we have a board meeting this month where we'll have our annual, um, annual audits being presented by our county. Um, but the following month, we're going to be presenting that wage survey and also, you know, some other issues that are affecting our high, our, their consideration. Um, you know, the simple fact right now, all of healthcare is in a very precarious state and we want to be respectful and we want to be very, very considerate in our uses of all fund. And that is why really this request for capital investment dollars made available. It is in, it is with the intent that the Maples continue to be financially independent and strong in the future.
I did have an opportunity to look over the audit, which the Maples is incorporated in, and I do see that fiscally, um, this represents the Maples doing very well. Um, a change in net position of over 1.4 million dollars is on page 30 of the audit. Um, did your, and so your fund balance increased from 21 to 22?
So we have seen our day's cash on hand fund. And there's a number of things that impacts them. Um, case in point, Medicaid cost audits, the state has been behind on those for the last several weeks. What that does, it creates a lot of speculation in our accounting and our budgeting practices because we may or may not know what the state ultimately decides to reimburse us for, or when they come back and make corrections in our Medicaid. And so in our budgeting, we have to make some assess, or some, some assumption. And it's very difficult for us to know or anticipate what those assumptions might be in the future. Also, so much of what the reimbursements and what the corrections and assumptions have been in the last few years has been directly related to COVID-19 ring. And we know that the public health emergency is slated to end on May 11th. However, from the state or from CMS, we've been given very little guidance on what that will actually entail. You know, these are the continued questions that we're waiting for answers to be.
Any other questions? Comment? Jim?
Do you have a contingency plan in the, in the event that this board decides not to give you the additional funds?
Truly, if the board doesn't release the funds for the capital investment needs, you know, we will ultimately still have to address the need. We will see our day's cash on hand reserves go down. Um, and that will put the Maples in a tighter spot should unforeseen circumstances come. Um, please forgive me, this is my first rodeo with county nursing home. What I can offer in way of in way of operating norm for healthcare entities. Typically, you would want to see a healthcare facility have in excess of 120 days cash on when we consider what should be available in reserves for potential unforeseen emergency. And so with where we are at right now, when we look at our annual operating budget, we are right at about we at our last board meeting, I believe the exact number was 131 days cash on. And for the sake of the future financial stability of Maples, I would like to see that number stay right at about. I don't think our goal is to see that number grow and but this would be an example of where the county commissioners could make this money available so that we not have to touch those reserves. And they can continue to be available to us. If that, if that off.
Forgive me, I don't know the answer to this, but is that statement that you made, does that hold true across the board for facilities like you when they're publicly funded as opposed to privately funded? I mean, you are an entity that is subsidized by the taxpayers and the county and have the, um, the surety, I almost want to say that, um, you have the backing of the county. You aren't an entity. You aren't an island uh, that has no, you only have your own fiscal, uh, safety net. There is a safety net. Am I saying that correctly, Shelley? Okay, I got a nod. Thank you. Um, so I'm just not sure that the, the amount of days that you're proposing is necessary is something that a publicly funded entity should strive for.
And, and, and I do understand, and truthfully, I, I can't offer a sound response to that. I would need to confer with the MCMCF group that oversees county nursing homes and really what the same. I, I, I don't want to respond without, you know, really having an objective. Um, what I would say to that, I would much rather come to you asking for capital investment dollars be made available than come to you all saying we're in an operational bind and I need, I need a safety net. Um, I think we would much rather come transparently and say, you know, these are the operating needs of the building that need to be addressed. And I would ask for dollars in that way, rather than saying, hey, we're in sticky wickets. We have a bind and I need you to bail us out. Um, I hope I never have to have that conversation.
Nate, has the, uh, has, have you guys begun funding a capital?
You mean taking revenue dollars and setting them aside for future cap, for future capital investment dollars? Um, that has not been discussed in any board meeting in the time that I have been. However, I will gladly get that question answered for you, um, in our next board meeting.
I think you just answered.
And remember what your cash on hand was 1.7 million?
Um, well, actually, if I could just, um, jump back to what Arts, uh, to Arts' question. Um, just in response to that, thinking if the formal conversation or if the structure to allow for future capital investment needs being more independent of, for the Maples, well, that would start with the current day's cash on hand. And allocating that money to specific accounts or specific investment vehicles that would allow that money to grow in the future or future capital. Um, so what I would look for as the administrator in working with our board would be that that would be a direction that we would head in for future capital investment dollars if that is what is, if that is also what the board is looking for.
The prior, prior to your arrival, um, those are some of the things that we had talked about you, with your board, about beginning to develop a capital fund. Obviously, it hasn't happened yet. And I'm sure there's good reasons because I got a lot of respect for you. Right? For me, it's really hard to reconcile that grow your surplus by a million dollars here on year. And yet you come to us, say, I look at, I need $75,000. Or I, I don't, I can't reconcile that. You've got the 75,000. And to the point that was being made earlier, unlike the private sector, got a safety net. You know, I mean, if things really went to the tank, this group right here has to make sure it all happens anyway. So you enjoy that luxury.
So where do you all want to move to?
Here's past, I remember when they came here for my time and asked for money, actually make, they were, we're not anywhere near that issue.
Right.
I would like fight your motion again here. I would like to adhere to the agreement that we have.
There's two motions in the packet.
I lost them both already. The Board of Commissioners approves payment in the amount of 225,000 to the Maples for capital expenditures in accordance with the document of understanding dated October 26, 2021.
Do Not supports. There's motion and support. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Do not?
Yes.
Markey?
Yes.
Nye?
Yes.
Roloff?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Orseki?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Thanks, Nate.
Thank you.
Yep. Consider approving purchase body scanner for the jail operational use.
In your packet is a lengthy memo about the body scanner. Um, and then a prepared motion. It's the consensus of the board, I believe, after various discussions that we're moving forward with the purchase of the body scanner. Um, the motion is a bit lengthy because we refer to, um, we refer to the packet and the, uh, the MMRA grant and other grants that we can apply for. There's a bug. I just saw you do it too. And so what's in your packet today is to approve that lease agreement based on the payments that were presented in the proposal. And it, um, has staff go after grants. I've already submitted the MMRA grant last week and we will, um, work on the 2% and get that turned in very soon, uh, the 2% grant to the tribe, I should say. Um, but what this, uh, agreement, this will put the lease agreement in place. There are no early payoff penalties for the lease. So if we get grant funding, that's not going to cause any issue if we lump some or pay off the lease early. Uh, the company also Soder RS, they don't require their first payment until a year after the lease is signed anyway. So we won't be paying anything for this device at least for a year, um, because that's, that's how they roll out their policy. And so that'll give us plenty of time to go after additional grant funding if needed. Um, if grant funding doesn't come through, we've outlined other funding sources in the motion for, to cover those expenses.
So are you going to make somebody read that whole thing or can?
Would you like?
I'll make the motion, the Board of Commissioners approve the lease arrangement to obtain a Soder RS full body scanner for a period of seven years with annual payments not to exceed $15,749.20 for years one through five and authorize an additional $9,750 for years six and seven for annual maintenance. The funds available first through grant sources noted in the April 11th, 2023 packet. Communications remaining funds available from unexpected inmate housing rent revenue and LAT CF funding and further that if there are any changes to the existing lease agreement or additional services of the machine are requested that the Board of Commissioners give prior approval for such changes to ensure proper funding is in place.
Sorry.
That is a very long motion, but.
I could do some longer ones if you'd like.
Nine seconds.
I'm sorry, can you read that?
I, I can, if you want me to.
It's important that your motions cover all the bases. We don't have to come back.
Tammy, if you do copy it off of that, on that first line where it says the Soder RS, I think it's ER, not OR.
Oh, sorry.
All right.
Solar, Soder, okay.
So a question for you, Katie.
Yes.
In the, in the, uh, motion, it talked about not to exceed a $15,800 of cash monthly, year one through five. What I heard you say is the first installment doesn't start for 12 months.
Correct. So that would be year one's payment is at 12 months.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Do not?
Yes.
Markey?
Yes.
Nye?
Yes.
Roloff?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Orseki?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Motion carried.
So I'm going to suggest we take a brief. I'm going to suggest we take a brief break. Twelve minutes till eleven. Let's try to be back in place at five till eleven. Back in session. Move on to item J, amendment to GIS service agreement for equalization department.
So you will recall late last fall, we approved an agreement with Cooligo to do our aerial mapping updates specifically for nine-one-one mapping. And we talked about at that time utilizing their services for parcel updates and aerial mapping in general for the county. And so we're to that point now that they're updating parcels. Sorry, I just ran from my office. We're to that point now where they're working on updating parcels for equalization for our digital mapping services. And so this amendment would not only update all the parcel data that we have currently to make sure it's exactly where it needs to be for Brian's office. This will also give us that public portal for the community to utilize to view the aerial mapping and addressing and those sorts of things. So it's an additional public service that we're offering to the community when going to our website. GIS was in equalization. Tom Loganbach had some basic skills as a GIS tech. So he was able to do the different updating and the mapping and those sorts of things. But that's very uncommon. Most times now you hire GIS techs to do this sort of service for the counties. Many counties do contract out this service. It's only the very large ones who hire folks and have a GIS department. So the fact that we're contracting out is almost the same across the board for counties of our size. But this is, like I said, an additional service to our community by having that public mapping. It also helps Brian's office tremendously in making sure that the data is up to date, especially while she's short staffed. It's just her and Trish down there. In addition to Polly, who comes in when she's needed, so.
So this service is a integral part of utilization. We currently don't have anybody on staff that could do what Tom was doing. Tom was doing it at a fairly limited level anyway. And we've so we've had this service for a while. This will upgrade it to make it more accessible to the public if they want to use it.
Yeah, we'll have a public portal search. I don't know if anyone's used like Grand Traverse County or other counties. There'll be an interactive mapping feature, public search feature on our website. It doesn't have a bunch of, you know, a ton of information, but it has that basic public information. Who owns a parcel, last sale price, SEV, that sort of things. And it would also, so Benzie County every few years pays for aerial flyover maps. Yet they're only used for internal purposes. This would allow those maps to also be integrated with that parcel data so that when the community views it, they're actually viewing the aerials as well.
How long is this contract? Twenty years are you setting up in this contract?
One year and then we'll renew it annually. That gives us the.
Bring it back annually or is it just become part of the budget?
It would be it would become part of the budget for so many years and then we would evaluate the service and see if we want to keep with it. If we want to change and if there's any cost change, it did it would require the further dialogue and a new approval as well.
Please. Board of commissioners authorizes an amendment to the services agreement with legal GIS for GIS services, including parcel data and aerial mapping maintenance in the not to exceed amount of thirty-five hundred dollars with an option to renew annually. That the chair be authorized to sign the agreement subject to approval by legal counsel. Funds available through the equalization department fund.
Or will or? Just one question that I just hear. Yep, already. Yeah. Then that important, though. Yes, I was just. With this renewing every year, this is an additional service that already have something with them.
So, yes, so the agreement in place right now is specific to nine-one-one and their mapping for like CAD and their services that they provide. This would be the equalization piece. They utilize the same aerial mapping. So the flyover serve Benzie County as a whole. But how those maps are utilized and what's given to the public versus central dispatch is much different.
And the public doesn't have a portal today to do it. They will after this.
There's a janky one that's not quite accurate and has no aerial mapping. It's there, but it's not user friendly at all and it's not mobile friendly. So you can't use.
Interface is not very user friendly at all.
New. This will be a huge enhancement for the for the community.
It sounds like there's a number of groups that benefit from it, from emergency services to realtors to the average homeowner.
Definitely.
It helps the assessors do them.
Yeah, that was going to be my comment, too. I wanted to know if it was cost effective for equalization. And it's more detailed or more specific than like Google Maps.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, which is free.
Yes, but with Google, it's not parcel data. It doesn't have typically last sale price. And, you know, Zillow does its best, but it's not always accurate. This would be, you know, county information that's put out there.
So the cost does justify the service.
Oh, definitely.
Big smiles. Okay. Thank you.
All righty, we have a motion and support. If there's no further discussion, roll call, please.
Marky?
Yes.
Nye?
Yes.
Roloff?
Yes.
Sauer?
Yes.
Or Seki?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
You're not?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Item K is accepting the equalization report.
So Brian is in the audience. We also have Polly on Zoom because Polly does have a full-time job and her help to us. And so she has tuned in via Zoom. I will bring her into the meeting. So if there's specific questions that, you know, Brian needs her assistance with. She can chime in on that. But you will notice that the equalization report is far different than what you've seen in the past at this time. It's much more detailed and it's an actual report versus a one pager. And so we're going to spend a few minutes on this because it is brand new in the way it's being presented. Polly, you are admitted into the meeting so that you can assist Brian in going over this report. You're just not muted or unmuted. She's unmuted. You're good.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
So April is the month where we must meet for county equalization. And so we have prepared this report, which will show you the data that we have this year as well as different reports that we will need to sign and submit to the state. So the first report is the Form thirty-one twenty-seven that's going to be found on page five of your report. Also, the form L forty twenty-four that was submitted separately in the packet. So that will be signed and then submitted to the state. So I do have a couple of points that I'd like to make. We did include additional things that our office does. We do create the parcel descriptions and update tax maps. So the numbers for that are going to be found on page nine. We also do issue new addresses. We are able to issue here in fifty-two new addresses for twenty twenty-two. And so those are also set onto nine-one-one and utility companies. So I guess really we're wondering if you have any questions.
Polly, did you have something you wanted to add?
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity and thank you for allowing me to enter via Zoom. I had knee replacement surgery two and a half weeks ago, so I'm not really agile yet. But yeah, a lot of work went into our equalization report this year. The team worked together very well. As you'll see on page six, we have a summary of where the townships came out for the twenty twenty-three taxable value year or twenty twenty-three year. And your SCV increase was a little over thirteen percent overall countywide. You had an eight point two five percent increase in taxable value. That's a nice, healthy increase for taxable value for the new year. We worked quite diligently with all the assessors and this year I am happy to say that there were no factors. So we really appreciated all the work that we got and the responses from the township assessors. There's a lot that goes into preparing this report, making sure everything balances correctly and everything was entered correctly. So we really appreciate all the communication that we have back and forth with the assessors. So, yes, we have a good year this year. One of my plans for next month is to provide some more detail is to what we've done through here and then the information that we provide to the state. Things are going well with the state. But we are still working on the plan with them and we won't know, we won't have a determination from them until after probably state equalization. But we can talk about that further. But we can talk about that further and I will, as I said, I plan on attending next month's meeting with some additional information on the report and the preliminary information regarding the mileage reduction fractions. I have done an estimate for the new year for Benzie County only. And it appears as though we'll be at a one. So there will be no headly rollback fraction for the twenty twenty three year. Just I thought the commissioners might appreciate that. Otherwise, I think my component is finished. And if anybody has any questions, Brianne and I and Trish are happy to answer.
Thanks for taking your time to be on the call today, Polly.
Happy to do so.
Why there won't have be a rollback?
Because of the inflation rate.
Yes, based based on the inflation rate and yes, how the numbers came in, it stays the same for one more year.
Yeah. And so this year was kind of an anomaly from what we've had since the implementation of proposal A. Proposal A determined that we couldn't have a taxable value increase more than five percent. But the inflation rate multiplier is a different calculation and that came out to be seven point nine. But taxpayers could only see a five percent increase on their taxable value if that fell through with their cap. So twenty, two thousand and nine was the highest it ever was since implement implementation of proposal A and it was a four point four. And then the following year in twenty ten, we actually had a point nine nine seven. And right now I think tentatively, we're also looking for twenty twenty four at a four point four percent, but we still have several months left of that inflation rate multiplier till that gets determined. But yeah, this year, five percent across the board and the headly rollback fraction was calculated at a seven point nine. So Benzie County preliminarily has a one, which is a good thing.
Thank you, Polly.
Thank you.
Excellent report. Thank you. I just have one name correction, if that's okay, on page four. Village of Benzonia, Chris Pritchard is their supervisor. Timothy Lynn is the president.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Just one, on the page where you identify the commissioner's responsibilities.
Yes.
You got that. There were some others that were affected in there too. Did you guys catch that?
Yes, yep.
Okay. And just from my own knowledge, personal property, we've got about fifty six million dollars. But there's really strong exemptions in the state of Michigan. I think anything valued less than a hundred thousand dollars is exempt from taxation.
Sorry. Hundred and eighty. That's the new gap.
Hundred and eighty now?
True cash. Yeah, that's the gap.
This fifty five million, is that, is that only? Is that what's being taxed or is that what the entire personal property is? And then the number is reduced from there because of the exemptions.
So that would have been after the exemptions were applied for this year.
Okay. So fifty five million is what we're taxing.
Yes.
Thank you. Other questions?
Just one last statement. We do need the board to sign the forty twenty four. And then if that can get sent back to me, I can sign that. We will need to upload that to the state to be in compliance. Other than that, we thank you for your time.
Alrighty. Thank you for your time. And for the equalization report, you're probably going to need a motion on behalf of forty twenty four.
Give a question?
I did.
That acceptance of the report that cover that?
Accepted and authorized the board to sign or chair to sign.
Don't make that motion.
Is there support?
One second.
Thank you.
Impressive report.
Thanks, Brianne.
Thank you.
We have a motion in support. If there's no other questions, ask for a roll call vote.
Guy?
Yes.
Yes.
Sauer?
Yes.
Porzeki?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
You're not?
Yes.
Marky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Just for my benefit, how much longer do we, we are under contract with Polly for her services? How much time is left in that? How many months are left?
About a month.
About a month.
Yeah, I don't remember the exact day, but yeah, and then we're working, Brianne and I will work with Polly on doing rather than a month fee, some sort of like fee for service kind of when we need her, we pay by hour or something on those lines. We're working through that.
Yes. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I've been asked if we can slide in Jim and Laura from the Friends of Benzie County Trail, Betsy Valley Trail, I'm sorry. Could I have the board's permission to do that?
Yes.
And then I just texted Liz. She'll be back here in five minutes. She had to run something up the road.
So if you guys could come to podium, we'd love to hear from you.
Sure. I'm Laura Tremor Spears with Friends of the Betsy Valley Trail and we were here in January, as you recall, to talk about our pursuit of grant funding to pave the trail from Beulah to Thompsonville and that's been under development. We presented to the road commission and they indicated you know, that that made sense from the road commission standpoint, got a lot of support from the road commission and then we met with the the management council this last week and also seems like there's support there. In the meantime, we've been looking at some of the existing agreements that, that are there to govern the, the development of the trail because it, as you know, it's a asset that's owned by the Michigan State DNR. But there's an agreement on the books for the county to management, manage it. And because of that existing agreement, it actually makes it maybe more complicated for other organizations to also play a role in trail development. Because you reserve the right to conduct trail improvements as you already have done with some trail resurfacing projects, it would require an agreement between another organization and the county. And then also the DNR would need to get involved and approve that change in the agreement. And it starts to look like a lot of different cooks in the kitchen. Stumbling over each other. So that's why I thought I would just present the, the one pager summary that, that we provided to Katie and Katie distributed to you just now that sort of outlined some of the reasons to get in position for the county to apply for grant funding now. You've probably heard through the national media about the infusion of money into federal infrastructure, once in a generation opportunity. And some of those federal grants are funding both recreation grants and transportation grants. And as a trail, this really cuts across many different services. In addition, over the winter, we took a close look at the culverts underneath the trail, which nobody had assessed, even though the drain commission and the road commission have both assessed all the culverts related to the roads. This is a major road through the county that has existed for over a hundred years, probably one of the oldest roads in the county and therefore not maintaining any current standards related to fisheries passage. So we discovered some culverts that are cutting off about twelve square miles of fisheries habitat. Ten square miles on Dare Creek and about another two square miles on Red Creek. So that's, you know, that's about twelve square miles is a third of a township. That's a pretty big chunk of the county that has no upstream fisheries passage. So there are also federal dollars involved in wildlife habitat restoration. So it would require, you know, layering of multiple different grants, many of which right now do not require matching funds or for the fisheries, there are private foundations that are investing in fisheries. Habitat improvements, particularly for the cold water fisheries, the, you know, migratory fish like steelhead and salmon that are using these creeks. And so we've, we've looked at that pretty thoroughly and we think that there may even be other grants that, that state legislatures are considering putting in to foundations to do additional trail improvements. But we think that it, you know, it's something that if, if the county is in favor that we're prepared to produce those grant applications. We already have a number of them that have already been drafted. Materials are ready to go. Just really need to, to go through dotting the i's and crossing the t's. So just looking for comments back, feedback to see if this is something that you're interested in having us continue to pursue. And then once those grant opportunities get announced, sometimes you only have a month or maybe two to really turn around and act on that. And that's why we wanted to start getting some of those ducks in a row right now so that when those, those announcements come forward that the county is prepared to submit the applications.
Who writes your grants?
I do.
Do.
But I, I have limited capacity, so I'm not taking projects right now.
Other than we have fiduciary responsibility, there's a downside to encouraging your group to go out and seek grants?
Well, I mean, I think as Katie's pointed out in the, the January meeting, administrative staff for the county already sort of have you know, their hands full. And so I think I wouldn't want to under, understate the, the importance of budgeting in these grant applications. They do often allow an administrative charge. They recognize that it costs additional administrative time, but then you would need to identify somebody who could work either as a consultant for hire or that you could hire in as staff. You know, as the, as the county grows, you know, you may want to hire staff and then by layering these multiple grants, you might have a ten percent administrative charge on one and a fifteen on another and you end up layering together enough administrative funding through the grant itself that it pays for the staffing. But I don't see a downside, but I'm a, but I'm a grant writer, so.
Do I understand this recreation pool of money, about sixty three million? Is that right?
So there, there are several different pools of money. So I, you know, there's, there's federal money that comes to the state. There's the regular state. You know, natural resources trust fund and recreation passport grants that you're familiar with that are funded largely through oil and gas revenues. But then there's this federal money that's also coming through the state. And then there's direct federal money through the US Department of Transportation that is funding because this is along a former rail corridor. This qualifies for transportation funding. It's non-motorized, long-term, sustainable transportation that is particularly appropriate for low income individuals. And so that, that can be another enhancing feature as lo, as well as that they're giving extra points for the wildlife habitat restoration.
Questions? Management council was presented, Jim presented to us. And we agreed that we're in favor of this. There's no it's not like the four million dollars that we had upfront in with. So these things, again, my understanding, they will be paid as we do them. And the friends, I think, have a sufficient fund to help, to help do that, but they would have to run it probably through the management council. Because we are the entity that works for the DNR. But the, my, my group is in favor of proceeding with this. The other thing then I've heard explained a few times or talked about between Shelley and Katie, we need to start considering, especially with parks and rec and everything, some sort of administrator, whether it's part-time or whatever. Think we just need to be there?
A community coordinator.
But there is an opportunity, like Laura says, that that can be paid out of the grant. So I'd like us to consider that anyway. So that's my two cents on that.
At first glance, this seems like a very measured, well-thought-out approach and I appreciate it.
Thanks. I, I keep calling it a five-year plan. It could, some projects of this scope really can take ten years, but before all the funding comes together. But that's where we want to bite off little pieces, get the culverts done first because you don't want to be ripping up the new pavement if the culvert fails from the paving truck driving over it. So yeah, we've really thought through it pretty carefully at this point and we think it could be done in a phased way.
I know we've had the discussion that administration has so much capacity and that's really it. But no, we're talking about revenue generating opportunities. And I would be in favor all day long of bringing on staff that would generate revenue for us. So just because we don't have it in place now doesn't mean we should pass on these opportunities. Just kind of struggle through it until we get staffed appropriately.
Right. Well, next month we may ask to be on the agenda again because if the spark grant round gets announced, then really the first phase of paving really would be from downtown Beulah to about Case Road. That would be the, the maximum spark grant is a one million dollar request. And you know, so that chunk which really serves, you know, Benzonia, Beulah in a very pedestrian friendly sort of way to get that, that safe for strollers and all types of bicyclists. That could be due as soon as, you know, a month. It could get announced anytime. So it could be due within a couple of months. So we'd want to be ready for that.
How long you been working for the trails group?
Not long, but I've been a grant writer for about thirty years.
But my point is going to be is you get one shot. Up this month. You wait six months.
I added to the May night agenda and my list if you want to tentatively plan on that.
That's going to have to be Jim. I'm giving a presentation in, in Toronto. The International Association for Great Lakes Research. Actually, I'm a scientist by trade. And so I just, I do this because I live locally and I'm interested in helping the trails and, and the natural resources along the trail. But that'll have to be Jim or Jed that are here on the night. So thank you so much.
We appreciate your-
Appreciate your time.
Well, it sounds like they're going to come back in May for official motion on application. I think they hear your general support of the concept. I think that will most of grants would require individual approval of each grant application, not a general. And so as they have grant applications, they'll have to come before you for official action on that specific application.
Thank you. If you would, please. We're also sliding Liz into the agenda.
She's on the agenda. We're just moving her up.
Okay.
Good morning, commissioners, and thank you so much for having me back. I'm Liz Nagrout, I'm the interim executive director for the Frankfurt area community land trust. The last time we spoke, I believe we were here and we were asking for an allocation from the ARPA funds, which you were kind enough to grant us. That was the first significant investment we had in our project. And it definitely kicked things off and has enabled us to move as quickly as we have. So since that point, we've come quite a ways and we're happy to say that we're breaking ground this week. Spicer's group is putting in the stakes for our first two homes this Friday and AJ's excavating is starting to put in the foundation posts next Monday. So we're here. We did it. And a lot of that is a huge thanks to you. I'm also happy to report that we are fully funded for both phase one and phase two of our project, which is located at Grove Place in Frankfurt, Michigan. So that is right off of, if you keep taking Main Street straight, if, as if you were going to go past M twenty two, it continues and then it turns into Grove Place. So that's where we have four lots right there. Phase one is the first two homes and we've got everything picked out for those as far as colors. We've got the final schematics. And we're taking delivery on those first two homes, May seventeenth. The second two homes, we've decided to put into a phase two project for a couple of reasons. One, we are looking at having the fourth home actually constructed on site by the Frankfurt Alberta area schools building trades program. But that's going to be a little bit of a delay before that really gets off the ground. So we're going to an alternative plan. We do have all the money raised that we need for the project. The other big chunk of change came from the mishda, missing middle program, which was written almost as if it were looking to solve our problem. It was absolutely our demographic. So that's sixty to a hundred and twenty percent of AMI. And we have eight candidate families that are working with NMCAA to take possession of the homes as soon as they're ready. That's scheduled for late summer, late summer for the first two homes and early spring for the, for phase two, for the following two homes. I'm also happy to report that we're coming in at a cost of a hundred and ninety seven thousand, six hundred and forty six dollars, which is sad that I've memorized. Which is wonderful because the houses are going to appraise at about two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars, we believe. And then of course, our model is to sell those homes to the qualified buyers at twenty five percent off of the appraised value. So all in all, you know, we're not losing a lot and that's huge thanks to the community who's come out and donated basically everything but the shirt off their backs to help us get these first four homes built. So I want to make sure to be respectful of your time and leave any questions that you might have for us.
I don't have any questions. I want to tell you that I travel the state, talk a lot about housing.
Yeah.
Frankfurt, your group, in my opinion, is becoming the model for what other communities should look at, rural communities in particular. I'd love you to be doing, you know, twenty homes at a time, spread out throughout the county. But I know, I know you can't get there right now, but
Yeah.
You got a, a good working board. You guys just really seem to know what you're doing.
Thank you. We've learned.
You got good people to learn from too.
Thank you very much. I appreciate those words.
Congratulations on the first four. Is there a phase two?
The phase two is just the second two homes of that.
Property outside of the four homes?
Yeah, we're actually looking at two rehabs. So there are two homes that are adjacent to Grove-
Yeah, we're actually looking at two rehabs. So there are two homes that are adjacent to Grove Place. Um, they're you know, in okay shape, but certainly a place where we could come in um, and offer them, you know, market value for the homes, convert those, take those and, and convert them to single-family homes that would be available in our same model. Um, those home buyers, one of them is not a long-term resident. Um, they live out of town, so that would be an easy one. And the other home, um, it's an aging male and he is thinking about moving into a different kind of living environment. It just so happens that at the time that we'd be looking at, there's the Lake and Main apartments would probably, um, the Lake and Main Town Homes would probably be ready for occupancy in Frankfurt. So it might be just kind of a shifting. So.
Those successes and forward motion.
Exactly. So we've got that, that hierarchy that we've, that we've kind of hoped for is really coming to fruition with the, you know, come into town, you've got the apartments available. When you're ready to buy a home, we can help with a little subsidized uh, first-time homeownership opportunity, which allows you to build an equity, which would allow a market rate home purchase in the future.
And I think it's important to continue emphasizing that these will stay in perpetuity.
Yep. Yeah, it's the, it's still the only model that we found that allows us to ensure that the homes are for long ti- long-term, year-round, Benzie residents who are already living and working here in Benzie.
Appreciate the presentation. Very good. I'm glad you were able to come back.
Yep. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Move on to commissioner reports. Um, last week, of course, a general review, and we're working through that right now. Agency on aging. On Thursday, they're gearing up, go back into um, live meetings. We have one more Zoom meeting um, next month. And then following that, we'll be back in Traverse City. Um, they have a new board chair, David White. He's a commissioner out of Emmett County. Um, took the place of Pam Niebrdowski, who was a commissioner out of Mesaki County. Uh, Veterans Affairs yesterday, fairly nothing really on the radar. Um, possibly looking at a, a small equipment trailer, but it's more for um, storing and transporting some of the equipment from Veterans Affairs. They have a fairly large tent. Um, a couple of grills, a couple of other canopies. Uh, it would work great for some of the members not to have to store some of that stuff at their own homes. So um, myself and Tyson Birch will be looking at some trailers and bring those quotes back to the committee next next month. So as well, today, usually um, first Tuesday, second Tuesday, is Village Lake Inn, so I'll attend that this evening. And we will move on unless there's any comments. You have Commissioner Jeanette.
Okay. Um, first.
There's some typos or something?
Yeah, kind of. On my report. I just want to acknowledge that that meeting with the Action Agency as it relates to the Housing Committee, I failed to recognize that Rhonda sits in that too. Um, so I just like my report to reflect that. Um, I had learned through uh, the MAC Finance and Governance about this additional lawsuit that you had talked about for, for opioids. Um, but what I heard said different that I hadn't heard before was that if you get in early enough, and I know we're already in because I checked, um, there's a twenty-five thousand dollar incentive. You hear that? May want to look into that.
I will.
All right. For, for each person that signed on in advance, which we were one of the first, I think, to sign up. Um, they were going to throw in a spiff, I'll call it, or an incentive.
Interesting. That's not in any of my emails.
And, and I'll be happy to, to chase that back down for you if you can't find it.
Yeah, because, and I asked Tim Smith specifically, because he's never once mentioned that to me.
Tim Smith?
Yeah, he's our local-ish attorney on all of this opioid settlement stuff.
And maybe it's something newly developed, or maybe they misspoke those.
I don't know.
And the last piece is I am running for the MAC Board, which will be decided later this month. Um, that's a decision that I made, so I'm not going to be asking my alleged in attendance at these meetings. Uh, but I would appreciate, each county gets one vote. Uh, I've talked, Commissioner Sauer into nominating me and I, God, I'm hoping I get one vote anyway, so.
It's for lunch today.
You won't be at the conference, so it doesn't matter. Hey, I'll be there too. You won't be at, you, you have to vote at the conference.
I'll still take lunch.
Now, now that I know that you can't do anything for me.
It's gotta be those present.
Thank you for bringing that forward, Art. Um, appreciate it much and wish you the best. Do you have anything you'd like to?
Nope, I submitted my report. Um, I did an impromptu visit to the jail and had a tour through there. So educational and so informative for me. So I appreciate that. I came for a separate reason, but I wasn't under arrest or anything. But I mean, yeah. No. Um, but other than that, I really appreciate it, Sheriff, for your time on that.
I don't think we saw your report.
Uh, that's what I just said. Mine's not in here either.
It wasn't in the packet.
I didn't receive anything.
Yeah, I just went, where's my report?
Do you want to just go over it? Do you remember what was on there?
No, I don't, actually. I mean, yeah, I, because usually I do submit that I apologize and I felt. I, I went to all my meetings other than I did not go to um, Lake Township. But we coordinated and I have touched base with Lake. Um, I had shared the drone information, I believe, that I talked about that before. And um, and I remembered that I did an impromptu visit of that, but I apologize. I thought my report was in here. My error.
It'll be, it'll be okay. And excused.
Thank you, sir. Apologize, board.
Oh, sure. I attended Agenda Review. Um, I had four meetings outside of that. The Village of Benzonia. They are advertising for an assistant superintendent. They had discussions, uh, talking about the Spark Grant, the Recreation Spark money, and what their thoughts are moving forward with that is a possible ice rink mat at Academy Park next to the Mills Community Center. This is a- A no Zamboni. But this is a mat where you could uh, ensure that ice rink, ice skating could happen all season long. Um, the season this year was two weeks, just the conditions were not right to maintain ice and there are community members who have donated skates and those are available at the Mills Community House. So this is one of the avenues that they're talking about going, applying for that grant, an actual mat. So uh, they also discussed, there's going to be a public hearing. There is a distillery looking at the old high school. And they are going to request a change in zoning, uh, to move forward with their purchase agreement from C-one to a conditional C-two zoning, which means that they would only want certain aspects. I believe the warehousing aspect of C-two and not everything else. It, they wouldn't turn into a distillery and then they could become something else within that zoning. So a very limited change. And there'll be a public hearing regarding that.
Approved.
I attended the Land Bank meeting. Um, there are seven properties that will be on the tax foreclosure list. Each of those properties were reviewed and discussed. It looks as though perhaps two of the vacant parcels might be of interest to Habitat for Humanity, but that remains to be seen. Um, extensive discussions about the rounds of blight elimination grants. We have three projects approved to date. When we were talking about different candidates, if you have blight issues in your communities, it's important to get that information to the treasurer so we can add those to the grants and we could secure monies to get those things remediated. Um, the Land Bank also approved, committed eight thousand dollars to administration costs for Susan Wenslake to continue to facilitate the blight grants. And that is the maximum allowed for an administration in the grant. So she's essentially writing grants that are going to pay for herself. So I attended the Benzie School Board last, uh, last night. They had discussions regarding a math curriculum purchase to teach a new method. Um, it was put on hold. The board requested more information. Homestead Hills Elementary is rolling along. Windows are going in this week and all the bricks should be done. And then they had two interesting conversations at the end of the meeting regarding getting on board with a social media lawsuit. This is um, basically claiming that social media, Twitter, all those little things that they do specifically target minors with disregard for consequences. This is the same law firm that brought the lawsuit against Jewel and won for making bubble gum flavored vapes and things like targeting youth. Um, so they're continuing that discussion. They did not make a decision. The school has also been approached uh, by Verizon about a tower on their property. The school has, I think, a hundred and fifty acres out there. They need a hundred by hundred site to put a tower two hundred and fifty feet high. It'd be a fence tower. Um, it, it's gonna go in within a half-mile radius of the school. They like to give schools and municipalities first options to jump on this. It would be a gen- a revenue generating venture. Um, in general, they, about eleven hundred dollars a month, which is negotiable. Um, but they are going to continue that conversation. And then I am, I was not charged to go to, but did attend the West Benji Joint Planning Commission. This is where the Sun Kiss development gets discussed. Um, there was a breach in the erosion with the, the waters. Um, as we heard from the building department, they responded immediately. Um, remediation efforts were in place. They are working on the list of conditions that were brought up at the last planning commission meeting. They also removed the signs that were on the trail and at the front of the development, which inaccurately depicted what the condos would look like because they had a cleared beach. And ordinances clearly state that there needs to be a thirty-five-foot vegeta- vegetative buffer that remains that has to be untouched. So those signs were pulled down. And I think it would be fair to say that community concerns are still clearly there and, and were shared. Um, so, but I'll keep you updated on how that moves forward. That's all I have.
Questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
How was math changing?
It's a new way.
Common core, I mean, let's. It's, it's a variation of common core.
Numbers zero through nine.
Right. Yeah, but the way you do it now is so weird. I can't figure it out.
I said it takes about three years to implement. And one of the questions by one of the board members said, you know, well, how would this impact the students learning right now if it's a three-year implementation? And so they wanted to hear successes and data from other districts that have implemented this um, before they move forward. But I'm not sure. There, there were no examples of how to do the math differently.
There's probably a box with four boxes that carry the numbers. It's confusing.
There was, there was an input. I can remember back this far. Nineteen sixty-five, sixty-six, when some new math came out and it was like putting blinders on. My dad was very good with math and it was like but it all got through it, so.
This is our last meeting. Um, I attended the Central Wellness Network's uh, Community Services Relations Committee meeting. Um, at that meeting, we reviewed the jail services report. Um, there's no, no significant changes there. Everything's pretty standard. Um, we looked at the drop-in calendars, both Manasty and the uh, Benzie um, facilities. We viewed the quality measures, the meaningful use in the NMRE critical incident reports. Basically, these are just the reports that we get that tells us how community mental health's doing. Um, nothing's really jumping out. Everything's actually going rather well. Um, and then the Quality Assurance Manager provided the committee with a proposed summary report. Um, and asked which uh, committee would be best to review it before the full board meeting. And uh, we decided that the Community Service Relations meeting would be a good fit for it. Um, then we reviewed a improved changes to a quality improvement program policy. Well, we didn't approve the changes. We are gonna make the recommendations for the full board to approve the changes. That's it for CSR. I attended the Village of Honor Council meeting last night. Uh, the Village of Honor hired Eclipse Communications, provide phone, internet and IT support. I'm interested that, that, that also includes the communications from the lift stations and their sanitary sewer system. The uh, hetero-zap representation from Gosling's Cubic Engineering Sciences present the village with the results of their sewer system analysis. Analysis included of inventory televising, the sewer lines, GSI mapping, of the sewer lines and manholes, and a forecast timeline for lift stations and sewer lines, manhole replacements and repairs. Although, a lot of fun to go over that. Um, the village passed a resolution to support in support of workforce housing to be at the Platt River Elementary School site. Um, there is a proposal there. I think the Sippee Bear National Lakeshore is wanting for workforce housing. They have a lot of seasonal workers that come in and they have no place to put them. They're looking to use this site, but they have to get the school so agreement because how it was purchased from the road, the road commission purchased it, there's stipulations on how that property can be used. My understanding is that the uh, Homestead Township's gonna be passing a similar resolution as well. That'd be tomorrow night though. That's all I have.
And I think the purchase agreement does not let them split the property. And I think that and it's not the national park as much as the group that's representing these folks. And the road commission made it clear, if you offer these, you can't offer them only to the national park. So uh, it's gotta be for local residents to, or they won't agree to it.
And the group and the road commission approached the school board regarding this, if they would allow the split. And the school board requested surveys and drawings and schematics of exactly what they were proposing, but did offer that if it would benefit the community and seemed to have the support that it did, they would be open to considering it.
Who benefits from the proceeds itself like that?
It's stipulated, I believe, in that, that it has to be a nonprofit, only nonprofit use.
Per dollar?
Probably similar to what the road commission got.
Right.
So if they were to sell it at a game, um, that money would go to who? Go to the school or would it go to the road?
I believe so, but I don't think you can.
Oh, okay. Any other questions for Ken? Evan?
I attended both my township meetings, Inland and Colfax. Inland Township, there's still a little uh, tension between current board members. Uh, Colfax, there's tension between current in-class board members going on. Um, Inland Township, really nothing, nothing new. They're just, they're having some discussions of putting some uh, the overhead lighting at some different intersections along thirty-one and they're also gonna write a letter to MDOT about trying to put in uh, a couple of traffic lights as well. Won't go anywhere, but. Um, Colfax Township, really nothing new there, but the tension between the board members. Um, old and new is that there's some missing equipment. Whether or not that shows back up, we'll see. Some cameras from the old campground that disappeared, so. Uh, let's see, Conservation District, I went to that. Um, they've applied for a rotary grant to help them. They've got a lot of problems with the route there and some other building issues, so they're trying to get that taken care of. Through that rotary grant, uh, also has the solid waste. They did receive the tire grant again this year. It was for twelve thousand dollars. And then the uh, the current uh, Lake Inn site for the cardboard trailer, that is, that's been taken out for now. And what they found out is uh, the company that does, we don't have anything to do with that, but they put them on our, a few of our sites, but that uh, company has been having some issues with their cardboard trailer, so they're kind of rotating them out. So one is missing from a current site, it will eventually show back up. So they're working on fixing those. And then Northern Disposal down in Thompsonville, the, the guy down there has purchased a garbage truck and he's gonna start hauling as well. And uh, it's gonna be, he's gonna limit it to five hundred customers, so. And it's supposedly gonna be cheaper than the current uh, or the GFL, whoever else does it in the area. And then just a reminder on the uh, the dates of the household hazardous waste and electronic. collections, June third is Frankfurt Ice Stool. July fifteenth in Thompsonville, DPW is a tire-only event, and then road commission is August twelfth. That's, that's it.
Questions?
One quick one. You had the inland meeting when they decided to buy that forty acres on the corner of Lake Anne and thirty-one. Just curious as how that came about?
I don't, I don't know that I could, yes, but how it came about? I'm not sure because there was talk that it was originally gonna be a farmer was gonna put in haps and then.
Was farmland and then it was cleared.
Yeah, and it was clear.
I was just curious, because it just seems odd that the township needed a forty acre.
Well, they need to, I think they got a pretty good deal on it, but they need to expand the fire department and everything there. So I think they're looking towards the future. We'll see how it goes, because like I said, there's a lot of.
Doesn't connect to what they have now, does it?
No, 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 but with the all the infighting going on, we'll see what actually happens.
It was very expensive. I don't know what good deal they got. It was not a good deal.
Yeah, it was what, over a year ago?
Yeah, I didn't know it was purchased.
That was over, well over a year.
Anyway, thank you.
All right, Gary, you're up.
All right. Set in on MACAG and Tourism Meeting, and they had a really good discussion. This gentleman's name was Ryan Koffey's, I think, or Koffey. And he was from MSU, and it was about commercial-grade solar. And some of the issues, and he doesn't tell one way or the other. The reason we don't have nuclear and coal plants, they immediately go to court. Best-case scenario to get approval, to build one is ten to twelve years. Well, instead, we're gonna put up solar things and none of this stuff is made in the states at all. Solar panels, none of them are. They actually destroy the ground they put them in because they have to go below the sub the topsoil through the foundations. Kind of reminds me of the windmill stuff. And this, this guy that works for MSU is more than willing to come talk to anybody that's working on their zoning and stuff on this. The panels right now, their life expectancy is eighteen years. Of course, the only place they want to put them is where it's already cleared, so we're looking at farmland. They were asked since they didn't announce what company, if they would do it, if the subsidies weren't there, and the answer was definitely no. Right now, Consumers Energy wants about two hundred thousand acres the next ten years with solar panels in. And if you go Google that and believe that, it's three hundred and twelve point five square miles. I think it's better to put a power plant somewhere because we don't need to lose the land, for one thing, and it is what it is, but if, if any of your townships are interested, I can get you the information. We talked to this guy about how they're, how they're doing the zoning and stuff. I thought it was very interesting. And for a two-hour meeting, he took about an hour and a half, so. And they just kept asking him questions. Betsy Valley Trail, we had our first meeting. We tabled the Ironman application because there was some issues when it comes to payment for the last time, and we're gonna, I'm following up on that. We did approve an application for the Benzie Sunrise Rotary. They usually do something every year. And I think theirs is set up for June third. And of course, like every winner, we have a lot of concerns from the plows and washing and stuff, so there's a lot of work to do on that. And the Joy Field Township, and at the Maples Meeting, they had asked the board about, and this is probably I'm kind of even nervous to bring it up, that maybe they need to change their screening or drug testing and stuff. Because I think the only time your drug test is on the first when you're first hired. But everybody's concerned about liability and legal because you're using federal money and stuff. And like Nate says, COVID's over on the eleventh of May. See how that goes. They have had good news on their Legionella testing. Everything's been negative, so I think they've got that problem taken care of, I hope. Went to Blaine Township. And I think Karen mentioned the drone. The fire department in Frankfurt was donated a sixty thousand dollar drone. And they're going to try to license folks to use it. Actually, Mike Cedarholm was on a flight back from somewhere. I can't remember where he said. And Senator Bergman, or Congressman Bergman was sitting in front of him. But when you test it, I wanna go, so. So I, I even stuck in my two cents. I'd like to see him play with it, but that's quite a be quite a, quite a piece of equipment for unless they're really expensive, sixty thousand dollars, that's just some time. But they, he, he wants someone in the fire department to get a license. And they want each of them to pay for their own license. Because there's money didn't be made. Anyway, I thought that was interesting. Everything else was budgets and everything normal. Village of Thompsonville. They got a question for me to ask the road commission, and that's about as far as that went. The DPW guy was sick, so there wasn't much remaining. That's all I got.
Questions for Gary?
Before we leave this here. I, I should have stressed something in my plat, for Lake Township, for those of you that don't know, Lake Township paid a hundred thousand dollars for power. I know that I shared it with Karen, the vice chair, and Katie, but I don't know if the other press heard that. That's, that's quite, quite.
It is. Hopefully, the other townships in the county will.
Wait, we get to grant.
That too. Yep.
Yeah, that was really, I think I read that in your report, right?
About the grant?
Or about the money that.
But I just wanted to press it public.
Thank you.
So in regards to Lake Township commitment, it's my understanding they committed their ARPA dollars to it. And so we need to connect with Lake Township because that adds a whole new level of ARPA reporting for both.
They have, it's not exclusive there, because they're giving more than what their ARPA dollars are.
Okay, but we'll still want to connect because they're gonna have some additional reporting by bestowing it onto another government. And then I'll have some added reporting, so I just don't want them to miss a beat with their Department of Treasury reporting. And so we'll want to make sure that we were connecting.
Are you gonna be in touch with them?
Mm-hmm, yeah. But very exciting news from Lake Township. We're very thankful. I did put the audit on everybody's desk, and so everyone has that. Mayor and Casterson will be here May ninth to go over the audit. It's a pretty good audit. Shelley's office and my office spent a lot of time putting things together and cleaning things up and reviewing that. And so it was a big task, but again, successful. Shelley's office did a great job. But it's on your desk and we'll go over it at next month's meeting. Lightning, so as most of you have heard, we had a lightning strike from the storm last week, and that lightning strike caused a lot of damage to the campus. I have submitted an MMRA claim. Various staff members are still working to get quotes, proposals, and numbers put together for MMRA. Emergency repairs have been made or are being made. That lightning strike caused issues in the sheriff's office, central dispatch, animal control, and this building because of the way lines are connected underground and of sorts. And so we have submitted a claim to the MMRA. This morning, you asked how much? Over a hundred thousand at this point. Probably closer to the one fifty to one seventy-five, if I had to guess. So we're working through that. Three thirty in the morning, I was on the phone with Becky in the middle of the night, so it was a good time, but our staff did a great job in responding, and I'm very proud of our staff as a whole in responding to those issues. But it's one of those things you can't really, it just happened, so. ARPA, back to that. Like I said, we're reporting. We have a report due April thirtieth. So we're working on that in my office. Budgeting will really get started now. We've gotten the numbers from equalization as to taxable value and what the village numbers will be, so we'll get those numbers plugged into BSNA, and we'll start budgeting on the staff level, and that'll come to you probably in June. So get ready. I will go, I will be at the MAC Conference later this month as well. I won't be there for the whole conference, but I'm going for the majority of it. So that's exciting. I'll be there with the three of you. I did meet with Bert Gale this morning regarding Sun Kiss Development. He kind of went over that this morning. While we were talking about the development and, you know, they pulled the permits and the permits were based on a unimproved right-of-way that's existing in front of that property. We looked at the soil erosion ordinance, which is twenty years old. And so just as some due diligence, I'm gonna send that to our legal counsel just to have them go through it and make sure there's no pertinent updates that we need to adopt in that ordinance, given that its age is about twenty years old. Last but not least, I've been working with Networks Northwest on our master plan and putting some changes together for that. And so the three folks that serve on that subcommittee, Commissioner Warsacki, Commissioner Marky, and Vice Chair Nye. If you could please mark your calendars for May twenty-third at one PM, we have a morning meeting. And so we're going to meet with Networks Northwest to talk about where we're at so far with the master plan. And so we won't have a committee of the whole that day because we've canceled those second ones. If you can plan on that. But the master plan, we have all year to finish that, but we are working on that master plan update as well. The goal setting that we're talking about this afternoon will play a part in the master plan, so it kind of all coincides together. So we'll keep all those things in mind as we put everything on paper. Other than that.
So what time on May twenty-third?
One.
Can I talk to you about that payment we made to Networks Northwest? Does that represent the entire amount we owed them then?
No, we approved up to ten thousand dollars for that project.
You said the soil and erosion ordinance was twenty years old?
Eighteen.
Eighteen-ish. How does, how do people in the public, or how do we access the county ordinances? Are those online or is there a, is there, are they going to be online?
So they will be in a more centralized location with the new website. But yes, they are online, the various ordinances, and Tammy's office is the official record keeper, so anyone can obtain a copy of the various ordinances that we do have. But we're gonna work to create a new page on the website so that they're just like right there and centrally located. Because they, it is a little tricky to find things on our website. So that would be, that'll be happening. Thank you. Understatement. It, it's tricky to find. It really is. So we will be, we'll be working on that.
Did you say May twenty-third?
I think that's our.
That's the fourth Tuesday of the month.
Oh, hold on. Second and fourth. Well, don't we usually, that's when they meet, second and fourth Tuesdays.
After four.
Yeah, because we won't have a committee of the whole that day.
I'm thinking the whole day.
Nope, so one PM. So that's actually the day we're gonna be holding the public hearing for the Hazard Mitigation Plan. And so Stephanie from Networks Northwest was helping us with the master plan. She was also the point of contact for hazard mitigation. So she'll be here in the morning meeting to, for the hazard mitigation plan, and then she's gonna stick around and we'll meet after the meeting regarding master plan.
That was the meeting that was being watched.
Yes.
That's after the election.
Go ahead and confront it now.
I just had one question. Wetlands problem, wasn't Eagle brought in on this?
That recent one? No.
No, Eagle had something to do with the wetlands there.
Not to my knowledge. Not to my knowledge.
Maybe they wanted them to be involved.
That could be. So our ordinance, like they said this morning, our ordinance gives somebody a five-day clock. And so once the issue has happened and they're notified properly by downstairs, they have a five-day clock to remediate. They remediated as soon as possible, and so really they were not in violation of the ordinance as it stands. The ordinance does allow the building department to find daily and during that five days. That did not happen. It's my understanding they didn't find daily because it's not a shall, it's a may. But the shall is the five days to, to fix the issues. And they did it within plenty of time. And like Bert said this morning, there's been a lot of rumor that they didn't obtain permits, and Bert assured me this morning that all permits were obtained properly and in proper timing. So I want that rumor squashed.
You're gonna squash it, but I knew.
Well, that rumor specifically. We're not gonna squash the whole thing, I know for sure, so.
Yep, thank you.
All righty. We'll move on to study session minutes.
Be approved the same.
Many appointments. There are two applicants. I believe these are both current sitting members.
They're both current.
That's correct.
And.
And I received a recommendation from that board chair. It would request reappointment for both of these folks.
And we have no applicants on file. We've advertised for that, so.
I would make the motion that the board of commissioners reappoint Ann Noah and Sarah Hines to a three-year term expiring April thirtieth, twenty twenty-six on the Benzie Transportation Authority.
Motion and support. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Unfinished business, if there's any new business. We received a presentation from Frankfurt Area Community Land Trust. Correspondence for your enjoyment. Brings us to our final public input. Annie?
I'm Annie Browning and live in Benzone Township. I just wanted to say, I'm so glad that you were talking about things like appointments on boards and per diems and that sort of thing. I know it's in popular or media recently for Traverse City. Anyway, I got me thinking about myself because I have various appointments in various municipalities and different ways. And anyway, so what I was thinking, because I'm on the Planning Commission, I would go to my bylaws to figure out if I was supposed to get a per diem. And that's where it says, okay, get a per diem if you have this or that appointment. So anyways, I was just, I realized the value of bylaws and also planning, like planning commissions, as we're talking about all, a lot of the issues anyway. Planning has been involved in one way or another. So anyway, it was really reassuring to come this day's meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Annie.
Thank you.
Michelle?
I just wanted to give you an update on the county chart of accounts. The state of Michigan is requiring us to convert to the new chart of accounts. I have been working on this project since last January, a year ago. And I get the, I submitted the final approval in mid-February only to find that the information they gave back to me was not what I submitted to them. So now we are delayed again. But by the time we go through budgeting, there will be a new set of line numbers that you'll be using. Good, good luck. On remembering what you used to know and what you now are governed by. But I'm, just wanted you to know that it's been delayed. And I don't know when I, they, they told me yesterday morning that they would get back to me. So that's where we're at with that. Also, Rhonda alluded to the fact that we have seven tax foreclosures this year. We also had seven hardship deferrals which kept seven out of foreclosure.
Great.
So that's higher than we've had in the past. Just so you know. Just so you know, other than that, Land Bank Authority received a hundred and twenty thousand dollar grant for demolition of three properties. We are working on the second go-around for that grant and a first go-around on the next grant in the fall. Um, so let all your townships know, I'm working on, uh, an email right now to all of the township supervisors and clerks to let them be aware of the fact that if you've got issues in your communities that we could assist with for blight elimination, um, to please submit those um, those pieces to us for our consideration. Um, some or many of them may not make the requirements of the grant, but send them, send them so we know. We'll start a list, we'll we'll do all the things. So, um, right now, the ARPA money for, um, housing and blight elimination are, that's coming out fast and furious. So, um, I think there's another round of funding in twenty twenty-four. So just when we, just when we kick off a bunch of funding this year, we'll have another, stay by it next year. So it's our opportunity to help our community, so let's do that.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Registered deeds, I just want to pass some information to you guys, um, in case you get asked or notice. We had an oil and gas researcher in the other day, so I asked him if oil and gas was picking up, and he said no. His company was hired by the state of Michigan to go around and cap a bunch of wells that were left uncapped. And I know there's a bunch of them in Perry's Townships, Evans'. Um, so if the public does ask, I think they've been hired by the state to go around and cap those. I think the company was Presidium, and I know we have a lot of leases with them.
Hello.
Just wanted you to know, and maybe if people ask.
And one of the foreclosures has, um, an abandoned. Yes, and supposedly there was a leak of that, and that's why they shut it down.
In two thousand eleven.
And in two thousand eleven, and it's on the foreclosure list at ten acres. Currently owned by the Benza.
By the county line, is that what we're talking?
Wallack County line.
Yeah, so we, we own it now.
We own it.
The county does, yeah. Yeah, no, it's bad.
Yeah, so if they're ever in here, I'd like to look at their brains. Are they, Presidium is here on behalf of the state?
Thank you.
Don't go smoking out there.
Probably a bad idea.
We'll close the final public input. Look, we're motion to adjourn.
I'm moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both.